Calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. With that, we have item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance, Superintendent.
Please stand. Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To members, which like the broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, November 7th at noon and Monday, November 8th at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live dot sec county dot net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting and submitted speaker form will be sent a link to participate. When is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Thank you. Alright, item 4.3 stellar student, I believe we are lucky, we have our student stellar, um, stellar student, James Doolittle, um, James, are you there? You want to go ahead and turn on your camera?
I am, hello. I wanted to make sure it's alright to turn my camera on, pardon me.
Thank you for sticking with us, we apologize for our lateness.
No worries, no worries.
There, I love it.
Thank you, I've got the mic and everything.
I love it. Alright, I have a, James Doolittle is a senior at West Campus High School. Is a stellar student that completely took the lead on implementing mental health support for students at the school. He created the Wellness Digest weekly publication that goes out to the students and is partnering with administration to form a Speak On It podcast. That's why you have that. To strengthen the student voice on social justice issues. Congratulations, James.
Thank you, it's much appreciated.
Would you like to say a few words? We'd love to hear about your podcast.
Oh, the podcast, yes, it's still a work in progress at the moment. I'm very optimistic. We've got a great publications team working on it. And I'm a representative here, but it's important to note that everybody at my school, all the participants of the community that I'm a part of and specifically about the podcast, everybody is working on that. They're all just as worthy of praise and credit as I am, so I really appreciate everyone at West. I appreciate Dr. Burscher so much for enabling me to be able to participate in my community as much as I have. I found a great degree of purpose in these activities and I'm just really grateful.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your hard work. Do we happen to have any staff from West Campus online? I know we're running a little late, um, if we still have anybody. Is it? Nope. Alright, well, thank you so much. We so appreciate your hard work and congratulations on being the stellar student.
Thank you.
We'll have to tune in maybe to your podcast someday. You have to send us information.
Please do, please do, I much appreciate it.
Have a wonderful evening and thanks for sticking in with us.
Thank you, you too.
Alright, item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are four announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021090277 and approved that by a vote of those members present 6-0, Member Villa was absent. The board also approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021080640 by a vote of 6-0 with Member Villa absent. Third, the board approved a settlement agreement to resolve claims associated with special education services by a vote again of 6-0 with Member Villa absent. And finally, the board approved by a vote of 6-0 with Member Villa absent, an agreement regarding the reservation of a school site in the Delta Shores Master Plan area. This agreement was reached pursuant to Government Code 66479 at SAC, which provides that a property owner and a school district can enter into a binding agreement to reserve future school sites within a new development. The agreement reserves for the district a designated 10.01 acre school site and gives the district discretion to determine in the future whether it will purchase the site for a new school. And that is all.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Collins. Can I get a motion to adopt this agenda? Motion of second, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Item 7.0, public comment. I believe we have seven live public comments, is that correct? Just ready? Alright, first speaker?
Our first speaker is Andrew Hutchinson.
Go ahead, Ms. Hutchinson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I had a hard time unmuting. Alright. Good evening, I'm speaking to you all tonight as a very frustrated employee of over 20 years. While things have never been perfect, we're watching the district solely fall apart on your watch. Some of this is a national phenomenon created by years of teachers and other school staff members being treated as if they're disposable compounded by a global pandemic. After years of being told, if you don't like it, then leave, many finally did. However, our staffing crisis is exacerbated by the chronic mismanagement of the district that should have been monitored and controlled by the school board. Instead of holding the district responsible for any of its failings, you continue to pass resolutions and celebrate doing so without doing what we need to do to meaningfully fix our problems. Since my time is extremely limited, I'll focus on the budget drama and how it adds fuel to the staffing crisis. Your constituents expect you to be critical thinkers, yet you often refuse the proper analysis of the budget or the proposals the district provides during negotiations. Some of you respond to emails with nonsensical talking points provided to you without considering whether or not they're valid. Telling the public that the district isn't proposing pay cuts is a semantic lie. When an employee has to pay 2% of their income into something, it's a cut to their take-home pay, plain and simple. When you cut their benefits requiring them to pay more into them, their take-home pay is reduced. That in plain English is a pay cut. You aren't going to attract new teachers that way. Another piece of the budget drama that irritates the community is that you're buying into the non-existent budget crisis, yet you don't require the district to cut the fat. In fact, sometimes you also benefit from some of it. As a single mom, I can tell you that folks with a true budget crisis cut the items that are too expensive or unnecessary. In the real world, one of the first things we cut is ordering food from restaurants. In the school world, you should have cut your catered box meals eons ago. We have employees who work multiple jobs to make ends meet. I used to be one of them. We pack the food we need to get us through the entire day because no one is expected to fund our meals. If you're really going through a crisis, how could you feel good about accepting free meals when you're cutting someone else's pay or a child's favorite programs? Another area of excess that doesn't match the myth of the budget crisis is in how you've handled the superintendent's salary and contract. You had no reservations giving five-figure raises to the superintendent and CBO. You don't try to renegotiate the superintendent's contract to match the energy of the crisis that you believe exists. You don't tell him that the district in crisis shouldn't be giving him an extra $750 a month for supplies when your own teachers are using...
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, if you could please wrap it up.
I will. Are using our own incomes to provide supplies for our students. And I will wrap it up very quickly by just saying, I really would really want to ask you to look at what you're being shown because what we're hearing in our bargaining meetings isn't matching what you're hearing in these board meetings. And I don't want to see more teachers leave. I don't want to see more kids lose programs. And I have believed in this board and I'm really starting to lose that that feeling that you guys are going to be able to help us save this. We are going to fall deeper into a hole. We're going to have more teachers that cannot survive this and who will be left to teach these kids? And what will they have left to learn? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Our next speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Hi, I'm Mo Kashmiri, I'm a parent of William Land employee. I'm wearing my parent hat at the moment. I just want to say, as I walk through the district schools, I hear the same things over and over and over. Is that there's not enough teachers, they can't get subs, they can't fill positions. Everybody is stretched to the limit doing more than they can do. And yet, we're not hearing the board do anything that would actually help resolve this crisis. The minimum of what a school district should do is A, be able to get people into their positions for all the schools. If we can't do that, we need to drastically rethink whether our salaries and benefits are enough to recruit and retain the best staff. I think we are in a serious crisis that isn't being addressed. And if, why would we give the superintendent raises when we can't? I mean, his raises are more than some of our campus monitors making an entire year. I mean, it's, it's just wrong. We need this board to step up and stop taking, playing the rubber stamp role and instead play a role of accountability, vision, and guidance. We want the best schools possible for our kids. That's not what we're giving them today. What we're doing is not enough. So I'd urge the board to take action, to raise salary benefits and improve working conditions and morale so we can recruit and retain the best staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is David Fisher and he's combining time with Nikki Malewski, Cindy Stewart, and Hassan McFort.
I'm sorry, he's combining time with three other additional, okay.
Hello. Our last bargaining session with the district was extraordinary. It's unfortunate that neither the superintendent nor representative of the school board was there to hear the discussion. The discussion was extraordinary for several reasons. First, Chief Business Officer Rose Ramos confirmed that the district has not had an actual structural deficit. Now normally, when a cabinet-level minister simply confirms facts and include official SAC City filings with the state government, it would not be deemed extraordinary. But in the context of this multi-year disinformation campaign being waged by Superintendent Aguilar and Sacramento County Office of Education Superintendent Dave Gordon, Chief Business Officer Ramos' confirmations were indeed extraordinary. Ms. Ramos confirmed that the district has operated with an actual surplus for nine of the last 10 years. The SAC City un-audited actuals validate that confirmation. We immediately expressed our appreciation for CBO Ramos's willingness to state openly what the numbers clearly demonstrate, that to have an actual structural deficit, the district must first have to experience an actual deficit, which is a mathematical impossibility when SAC City has had a surplus for nine of the last 10 years. That explains how the district's unrestricted reserve fund has grown to 103.7 million, the highest in SAC City history. CBO Ramos then stated, quote, "The district has never claimed that it had an actual structural deficit, but we do have a projected structural deficit," end quote. Ramos's statement about a projected deficit expresses another significant admission. The district budget predictions have been wildly inaccurate, especially since the superintendent has been here. Last year, for example, SAC City projected a $75 million deficit, only ended the year with a $19 million surplus. Under Mr. Aguilar, SAC City has repeatedly, quote, "projected" a structural deficit when the district's actual performance shows it has a structural surplus. Based on Ms. Ramos's statements, we asked Pam Mandler, the district's lead negotiator, whether SAC City was claiming an inability to pay for SAC, I mean, SCTA's proposals. Ms. Mandler stated definitively, quote, "The district is not claiming an inability to pay," end quote. According to labor law, that means the district is admitting that it cannot afford SCTA's proposals. Chief Business Officer Rose Ramos also revealed that she, Superintendent Aguilar, and SAC City in-house counsel Rebel Bolzio meet weekly with SCOWI Superintendent Dave Gordon and other SCOWI administrators to discuss the SAC City finances, including our negotiations. Ms. Ramos also clarified that SAC City, I mean, that SCOWI reviews and approves the district bargaining proposals to SCTA and reviews SCTA's proposals to SAC City. Based on Ms. Ramos's representations, we believe that a representative from SCOWI needs to be directly involved in our bargaining in accordance with state labor law since SCOWI is making decisions about her contract. Chief Academic Officer Christine Beta also contributed an additional perspective when she confirmed that the district had a major staffing crisis amongst certificated staff. The district still has over 600 students on the independent study waiting list and approximately 200 certificated vacancies. Because of the vacancies, Ms. Beta stated the district has withdrawn, creating 40 new academic intervention teaching positions, which would have provided critical services to our students because SAC City simply cannot hire enough staff. And while the vacancies have the district using 225 substitutes per day, SAC City has been unable to fill an additional 70 substitute positions per day, leaving thousands of students stranded without a regular teacher leading their class. After Ms. Beta acknowledged the staffing crisis, the district's bargaining team was unable to explain why Superintendent Aguilar continues to demand a five-year wage freeze in addition for his demand for almost $10,000 per year cut in the average take-home pay of teachers through increased healthcare costs. And SAC City representatives had no answer how this unprecedented demand for takeaways occurred in a district which claims equity access and social justice as a core value. And the superintendent, already one of the highest paid in the state, will be receiving a 17.5% salary increase over that same five-year period. By the way, in your own, in the districts which are your negotiations updates, you claim you have not proposed cuts to teachers' pay, but rather just a, quote, "update" or a, quote, "alignment." You should have the integrity to call it what it is. A massive reduction in teachers' take-home pay, which would make SAC City's teachers by far the lowest-paid teachers in the region and during a massive teacher shortage, no less. You're proposing that a new teacher with a family on Health Net would take a 38% cut. Meanwhile, your own LCAP suggests that the district, quote, "maintain a competitive salary and benefit package for certificated staff to increase the district's ability to recruit highly qualified candidates, retain experienced teachers, and reduce overall turnover," end quote. Your proposal does the exact opposite. At bargaining, we asked the district to explain how cutting take-home pay by $10,000 per year helps to recruit and retain staff. The district had no reply. To which we now turn to you, the public officials elected to lead our district. Over 8,500 students per day are without a regular certificated teacher in the classroom, every single day. How does demanding a $10,000 reduction in the average teacher take-home pay help students? Especially when the district has an unrestricted reserve fund of 103.7 million and an additional 313 million in federal and state COVID funds? This attack on educators has already gone on long enough and done enough damage. Our students deserve to have a teacher in every classroom. It's time to show some leadership and change direction for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Can I ask, is this your report or are you still reporting later as well?
We submitted that report in writing.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next speaker?
Our next speaker is Rich Basswiz.
Good evening, Board President Pritchett and Superintendent, members of the board. I'm just trying to find out what's going on over here. Again, a junior, I'm Johnson and we're with the CTE program, the HMS Academy. I'm trying to find out, are we ever going to get a teacher? I know two weeks ago, we had a waiver, okay? We're not, you're not going to have a fully qualified one. Okay, well, where is it at? This is two weeks ago. How much longer does my kid have to live this vacancy? We already lived vacancies freshman year. I mean, this education that we've gotten in Sacramento City Unified has been trash. We didn't have no programs, no resources growing up. Middle school, you go to a top middle school and you're nothing because you don't already have the experience. You didn't have the programs to put yourself to compete with the other kids and now we're over here at Johnson. You know, two years left and we're still living dunk. We're living crap, man. I mean, when are we gonna, can I just get an education? We're trying to get out. I know some families, it's tough. Like, I mean, we're trying to get out of poverty. We're trying to, like, you don't have parents like me really putting it on my kids and at this point, what do I tell them? How do we believe in education? Keep, yeah, I'm one of my, they want to be teachers and stuff. I mean, what are we doing and what are we showing them? Can you please give me an update on this teacher? How are you, right now, we're promoting the CTE, the specialty program, so that's what we're promoting. Hey, come to this academy where you don't even have a teacher to lead us. So again, you're just continuously damaging our education, our future, right? If teachers matter so much, why can't we get them in the classroom and get provided an education? Are any of you guys, have any of you guys that have teachers in the district, are you living this? So how can you put yourself in the same shoes as us? I mean, come on, man, how many more vacancies we gotta live? Why do we have to go through this? Get this stuff together, please. Been living this, our whole 18 years of this, this district, it sucks, man. Get your stuff together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vasquez, next speaker?
Our next and final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, everyone. I've listened to all of the comments that have happened over the past few minutes. I don't know that in my time of advocacy or as a parent within this district, I've ever seen a budget that was built from the school site up. I know that if I was a sports organization, I couldn't pay a coach if I didn't have enough players to, you know, operate my team. But every year, when we proclaim budget deficits, I believe is a structural spending deficit and not an actual budget deficit. I mean, if we have hundreds of millions of dollars and we have a community that's filled with nonprofits that can operate on thousands of dollars to serve vast amounts of students, then I think we have a structural spending deficit. So I'd love to see a budget presented at a board, meaning that it starts at the most direct level of spending that affects students, which is at the school site. And then from there, at whatever point we run out of dollars, then we figure, okay, we have a deficit at CERNA or we have a deficit in administration. But if we started at the students in terms of spending, then we should be able to fulfill the needs at the school site first. But what I see is cuts that happen first at the school site. We don't address where the inequities are or the disproportionality are at other levels that have no direct impact on students. So I would love to see that. But I would also love to see a board that acknowledges that whatever we have going on in bargaining, whatever we have going on in staffing, whether you guys trust our staff, our system, or whatever, whatever it is, is not working. As Rich said, these disparities in terms of services and expenditures and outcomes for our students have existed for far too long as we've gotten more dollars as a system. At what point do you guys say, whatever is happening, whether it's, you know, in these meetings, negotiations, it's not working, we have to change something? We have shortages in staff. At what point do we say, let's lean on our community partners and nonprofit organizations and CBOs to fill those gaps and not do what we've done?
Thank you, Mr. Gladney, if you could please wrap it up.
That is your role as the board. And I hope that you guys, as set of yourselves, whether publicly or privately, because that is the task that you guys have been voted into office to fulfill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That was the final.
That was the final one, thank you. Alright. Alright, item 8.0, special presentations. First, we have 8.1, resolution number 3238, recognition of National Native American Heritage Month. We have Mamfreak Chow and Christina Prairie Chicken. Christina, are you on? Can you unmute yourself?
I'm sorry, apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Good evening, respected board members and superintendent. I'm Christina Prairie Chicken Narrez. I'm Ogallala Lakota. I work in the Development Department and I'm a Youth Services Specialist. Tonight, we have Alina Sanchez. She's an eighth grade student from Albert Einstein Middle School. And she is actually, she's also a Plains Miwok. She's from Wilton Rancharia, which is the nearest tribe to the district. And so she's going to help us with reading the resolution tonight.
Fantastic.
A Texas, Oyasa, Ol' Sanchez. Hello, my name is Alina Sanchez. I am a Miwok Indian from Rancharia. And I will be now reading the Native American resolutions. National Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize the contribution, contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States. Native Americans are the original indigenous people of what is now the United States of America. Native Americans maintain vibrant cultures and traditions, hold a deeply rooted sense of community, and have made and continue to make distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. California has the highest Native American population in the country. It is home to 109 federally recognized tribes with approximately 81 groups seeking recognition. California Native American Day was celebrated on September 24th, 2021. Over one-half of the state's Native American population is composed of individuals and now their descent who relocated to large urban areas as part of the federal government's determination policy. Before the missionary fur trapping and Gold Rush era migrations, California's Native American population was estimated at about 200,000 between 1840 and 1870. Population declined to 12,000 due to disease, forced removal, and death. The census bureau is estimated that in 2020, there were more than 631,016 individuals of Native American descent in California and more than 18,637 in the county of Sacramento. The city of Sacramento celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 11th, 2021. The California Department of Education School Dashboard indicates that Native American students with, within SUSD are more likely to be chronically absent. Governor Newsom approved Assembly Bill 516, which excuses an absence for participating in a cultural ceremony or event. The Sacramento City Unified School District resides on lands of the Ni'is and Anmiwok people. SUSD is committed to improving the academic and social emotional outcomes for Native American students and all students in the region. 2020 to 2021 CDE data question formation indicates there are 28,331 Native American students in California and 217 SUSD. A recent poll of infinite campus data indicates there are 474 SUSD American Indian students that are classified as two or more races. SUSD's American Indian Education Program, AIEP, provides tutoring, cultural programs, after-school events, field trips, and graduation recognitions for American Indian students enrolled in the program. SUSD is committed to supporting students by providing services for self-identified American Indian students who are unable to enroll to AIEP program due to lack of documentation. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well done, Alina. Alright, do we have any board comments on this question, on this intended item? Oh, public comment? Go ahead.
We have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again. Because I put my kids through a neighborhood school at Cabrillo and San Brandon, I was blessed to have them benefit from the presence of the McGurk family, who was a Native American family in our community. So I just want to give blessings and prayers to Letitia and Big Lino, as well as their kids, Mylina and Lino and Vicky. But because they were a part of our community, we're able to have them present and sharing their culture through dances and, you know, cuisine and just their presence as well, just allowing our students to really see a direct lineage between what they're learning in the classroom in terms of California history and present-day society. Again, with these resolutions, they're a great first step. I would love, I was thinking about how can we, again, elevate these resolutions to something more impactful and meaningful and tangible? Reach out to those students within our community and I would love to see these resolutions attached with some performance, visual and performing arts so that we can really directly tie those words in the resolution to something meaningful that people will walk away with and can carry with them through the rest of the days, the months, the years, and really have these resolutions mean something beyond a set of words. So again, I just implore you guys to continue to stand behind these sorts of resolutions, but also have something more impactful that people walk away from a board meeting and say, I took something away that I'm going to carry with me for the rest of my life. So again, just, you know, just, I love the McGurk family and their children are tremendous and I hope that you guys continue to support the American Indian Education Program and continue to direct funds to support those students. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence, and I agree, I do miss having those advances in our, in our boardroom. Once again, we will have that. Do we have any board comments or questions? Alright, well, thank you again, Alina and Christina. We really appreciate that. With, can I get a motion to approve resolution number 3238? Alright, motion and a second student preferential vote. Alright, and I will do roll call. Christina Pritchett, aye. Member Moroski? Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Villa? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member, oh, no, you did the student member. Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight. Alright. Item eight point two, Resolution number thirty-two forty, recognition of Veterans Day. I have the pleasure of reading this resolution tonight. As a daughter and a wife of a veteran, I can tell you, growing up, freedom is not free. And there's often times when our family members go away and we don't know if they're coming back or when they're coming back. So I feel very blessed to be able to read and approve this resolution tonight. I'll just read a few of the parts of the resolution. The first is, whereas on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have defended these values throughout the nation's history. And whereas serving as educators, support staff, administrators, parents, and other important capacities, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serves as a testament their dedication to the welfare of our country. Whereas on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots whose courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe. And whereas we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices. Now, and therefore be it resolved, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognizes Veterans Day on the eleventh day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and the community. Do we have any public comment? We have no public comment on this one, correct? All right. And I also want to say thank you to all of our staff that are veterans as well. Thank you for your service. Do we have any board comments or questions? All right. With that. Oh, we have somebody? Okay.
Excuse me, Board President Pritchett. Hi. We are so fortunate and blessed to have a couple veteran employees who are veterans and employees here with us tonight. So I'm hoping Gamine Curry, who works in the district office, and Bruce Nguyen, who's a counselor at Cap City, are on the screen somewhere and able to join.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words? Ms. Curry, would you like to say a few words? I love that background. It keeps on shining over you as an American flag. It's pretty cool. Oh, you're on mute.
President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board, on behalf of SUSD veterans, I thank you for this. Greatly appreciated for acknowledging us. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Sorry, Consey, you said we had one more employee online?
I'm not sure that I see him. I know that our schedule is a little bit off. We're running a little bit late. He may not have been able to stay, but Bruce Nguyen, who is a counselor at Cap City, also a veteran, and very appreciative of the resolution and what it means. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you for sticking with us. And I know we're running a little bit late, but just know that we appreciate your service. With that, I will take a motion for approval of Resolution number thirty-two forty. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Wu, did you, you pushed your button? Go ahead.
Saturday, I got the two veterans memorial where they national gold medal. And I was very proud.
Amazing. Thank you, Member Wu. All right, and I got a second? All right, student preferential vote. All right, Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski? Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Fantastic. Thank you again for your service. Item eight point three, update on mandatory COVID-nineteen vaccine for eligible non-exempt students and staff. Mr. Lyons, Ms. Flores, and Mr. Bozio? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores, a service-year Director of Student Support and Health Services. And tonight I have with me Raul Bozio, our in-house legal counsel, Rose Ramos, our Chief Business Officer, Bob Lyons, our Chief Information Officer, and myself. And tonight, we're going to talk about updates around vaccination and testing updates. And just want to say thank you for that beautiful honoring of our veterans, many who are serving in our COVID response right now. So next slide, please. So we always ground ourselves in, you know, the current updates around COVID and the impact to our community. And this screenshot here really provides a historical perspective about the impact of COVID. And so we're taking you back in time to October of last year. And if you see this pink line and this pink kind of dot and triangle, this was where we were, remember, we were trying to hit orange by the fall celebrations. You know, it was orange by Halloween, and we didn't, we didn't quite make it. And in fact, then we experienced this real surge and a wave of COVID over last winter, cold and flu season. We came back down, we had vaccine, we were so incredibly hopeful. And at this next peak over the summer, Delta impacted our, our whole world, really. And we saw it coming, and yes, it did impact us. And so now, as we sit here in this, you know, October, November, looking at our data, you can see our case rates are higher than we were last year. And so that's concerning. And the other thing I want to draw your attention to is our current case rate. So in this box, you're going to see we're starting to see a slight tick up. This really is concerning. It makes us a little nervous. I looked at the data just today, kind of stayed, came down a tiny bit, but, but this is, you know, what we expected last year with cold and flu season. And so that is why we are here tonight to really talk about all of the ways that we can hopefully mitigate another wave, increase our vaccination rates, and hopefully get us back. But this is, this is what we'll keep a close eye on. Next slide, please. So as we look at our vaccination rates, that's the one tool we have in our toolkit that we didn't this time last year. We know thirteen point four million children nationwide now. Twelve to seventeen are fully vaccinated. That number continues to tick up. And we're seeing positive increases for our young people here locally. Our twelve to seventeen-year-olds now fifty-six point one percent are at least partially vaccinated. And we continue to see, you know, more young people coming to our vaccine clinic. So we're really heartened to see this number go up, and we're hoping that this board resolution continues to make a positive impact for this age group. Next slide, please. So we always ground ourselves as well, not only in that, you know, national or local county data, but also what are we seeing in our own district? And so when we look at our COVID cases, you know, on our, our publicized dashboard, just a reminder, this data dashboard shows positive cases that were physically present on our campus. This purple box shows the total number of cases, six hundred and seventy-six. And that turquoise box is of that six hundred and seventy-six, sixty-eight are actively home on isolation. They are actively impacted by COVID right now. Keep these people in our thoughts and, you know, prayers in our heart. Three hundred and twenty-three are actively under some type of quarantine, whether it's modified quarantine, full quarantine, or maybe they've been released because they were fully vaccinated. So when we dive into our data even deeper and we look at all of the cases that we've contact traced in our district, this is the concerning trend and why we really felt, you know, compelled to bring, you know, these pathways forward to you. Now forty-four percent of our total cases are in that really vulnerable age range of, you know, five to eleven, or even preschool, you know, to fifth grade. And we're seeing this trend go up. Last time we came to you, it was forty-three percent. Our, you know, sixth to twelfth graders, so that, that twelve to eighteen-year-old, pretty steady, staying right there at thirty-nine percent. They have had access to vaccine for some time. And our staff rates are starting to come down just a little bit, which is very heartening as well. But this is, you know, this is why we're taking these steps, and these are data and figures that we look at very carefully. Next slide, please. So as we look at our total response, why, what are we doing and why are we doing it and kind of really giving some life to all that data? We look at all of the staffing that we've onboarded from last year to this year, one hundred and sixty health aides serving out at every single school site. Our goal is to have two per school site. We're continuing to ramp up our surveillance COVID testers. So we're up to sixty. It's probably going to climb. Twenty-four contact tracers actively working with us and six support staff. Those are the folks that are entering that data every day, every night, that populates that dashboard. And then twelve and going up, data integrity and entry staff. They've been entering our staff vaccination records, and they are now pivoting to entering student vaccination records. And we're going to continue to onboard more. You've seen this data a lot. You know that we've been in the vaccine game for a long time. We hit fifty last night in clinics. We've done lots of testing. We're probably over a hundred thousand now. And we've, we've had outreach and contact with eight, over eight thousand individuals who've been impacted by COVID, whether they were positive or they were a close contact. We've got lots of folks registered for staffing, and we're going to continue to encourage all of those folks that are now going to be required to, I think I said staffing, sorry, testing. And we're going to continue to encourage folks to register and participate in that routine and regular testing if they need to. Next slide, please. We've also had some really great recent developments in the news since the last time we were with you in October. Booster doses were approved for all three vaccines, Pfizer, Moderna, and J and J. We know that we have authorization for this mix-and-match approach. So if you got a Johnson and Johnson and you're like, hey, you know, I want to try that different technology or vice versa, you can do that. Everyone sixty-five and over is encouraged to get that booster dose. And there's lots of different eligibilities in the eighteen-plus. The two I want to call out, anyone serving in K-12 education qualifies for that booster dose, and we encourage folks to come get that. But one that really is specific to the community we serve is this at-risk due to social and health inequities. And when we look at that healthy place indices, quartile one and two, these are talking about communities with the least access to healthy, you know, activities and healthcare. That is the majority of our school district. So the majority of our community does qualify for that booster dose, and we are serving those here in our clinics. If you had Pfizer or Moderna, you just have to be six months past your second dose. And if you did get Johnson and Johnson, there's, it's a great vaccine, it's a one dose, you can actually get a booster now if you were two months past your first dose. So some, some really exciting news, especially as we look at that data of going into cold and flu season and another potential wave. Next slide, please. This one's really exciting. I know maybe we have some, you know, folks on the board who have children in this age range, yes. Or no one loved children in this age range. So children five to eleven, as of yesterday, here in our western states, are now eligible for the Pfizer vaccine under emergency use authorization. Just some quick, you know, updates and facts. It's one-third the dose of the adult vaccine. And that's because children's immune systems are very different than ours. And so it really does correlate with the data and children's biology. It's the same two-dose regimen, though, just like we may have received. So first dose, and then three weeks later, they'll get that second dose to be fully vaccinated. Ninety-one percent effective at preventing symptomatic infection. And we should hold in our minds, this is even with Delta, totally different gain, right, than when some of these adult vaccines were vetted. Side effects were very similar to adults, you know, some tiredness, maybe a little achiness. No reported cases of myocarditis in these trials with these children. That's really, you know, a great result that we're going to look at and track carefully. And we know that one point nine million children have been impacted by COVID. Dr. Bloomberg talked about those, you know, effects that he's seeing here locally at, you know, the hospitals that he's serving in. And COVID is now the tenth-leading cause of death in children. And that's just really kind of devastating to see this published. I mean, I do want to reassure our community, our SAC City-sponsored vaccine clinics will provide vaccine to children five and over. It is on our website now. You can register for your dose next Wednesday here at the CERN Center down in your boardroom. Will be littles, you know, hopefully with their little Band-Aids on, getting vaccinated. And all of our clinics moving forward will have many coming out that'll be hosted at our school sites. So lots more to come there. Next slide, please. So this was our board resolution and the pathway forward to move, move hopefully beyond COVID vaccine for all eligible students and staff, twelve and over. Valid exemptions do apply. We know those with exemptions or those not yet required to be vaccinated, you know, must participate in that regular testing. And we're really doing this to increase our community and create safe schools. And so at this point, I am going to turn it over to Raul Bozio to take the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Victoria, and good evening, President Pritchett, Board of Education Superintendent. First and first here, our slide is basically a reminder of what the, the board resolution contained that the board passed and some of the key provisions. Just as a little setting here for reminding the board of what it was contained in the resolution. And some of the key provisions include that the vaccination is required for students and staff aged twelve and older. The deadline for providing proof of vaccination is November thirtieth, first or second dose. Students and staff not yet vaccinated, first or second dose by November thirtieth, including those with exemptions or conditional admissions, will have to regularly test. The options for unvaccinated but eligible students and staff, again, if, for, for students who are not who have not provided the proof of vaccination and who are not exempt in some fashion, would be provided with independent study beginning the first day of the second semester. That is January thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. And then finally, there are exemptions for students, appropriately documented medical and personal belief exemptions with the requirement of regular routine COVID-nineteen testing. And similarly, for, for staff, again, appropriately documented medical and religious belief exemptions with the requirement of regular routine testing. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide. Here we have kind of an overview of the stages that are, are involved with our efforts towards increased immunity. We are in currently stage one, that, that time period up to November thirtieth. And that includes the mandatory vaccines for staff and students aged twelve and older at this point, mandatory regular routine testing, and the process for students and staff with exemptions or seeking those exemptions during this time. Stage two is kind of a TBD stage where we're looking at that, as Victoria mentioned, the, the recent authorization for five years and to eleven-year-old students, children under emergency use authorization. And then finally, stage three in two thousand twenty-two, where the district would continue to monitor and align our processes with CDPH regulations and legislation. And I will say on stage two, the district's kind of process and, and thinking on that will be discussed a little bit later by Ms. Flores in terms of how we're going to be looking at the, any sort of requirements in the process for students aged five and older, five to eleven. Next slide, please. Again, here we have a timeline. We had a similar timeline, I think, in our last presentation, but we've updated it with some, some greater details here, beginning with the October twenty-nine, twenty-one, the process that the district launched and communicated to the district SUSD community. Throughout November, the next, the next point on the timeline, the district staff will continue to analyze the data and targeted communications and, and prepare and issue targeted communications to the community. On November fifteenth, there's a plan to send a hard copy snail mail letter sent to every student and, and staff home. And again, that's in addition to the electronic communications, which have already been put out. There's the big date again, November thirtieth, twenty-one, the deadline really for the first or second dose. Or for those with an exemption to, to submit for that exemption, have that approved, and, and submit to regular routine testing. and, and submit to regular routine testing. The period of time in December, right up into winter break is our next point on the timeline, December first through seventeenth. Where non-compliance will result in ongoing notifications that inaction will lead to enrollments in independent study or for staff corrective action. Throughout December and January, again, the staff will conduct data analysis of targeted communications to SCUSD community. We understand, staff understands and is, and is planning for this time period between December through the end of January, when we hit that point of January thirty-first where staff and students who are not compliant, haven't submitted a back proof of vaccination or have not obtained an exemption. At that point, again, it would be independent study for students and corrective action for staff. You know, and that staff will be placed on leave essentially at that point in time. But during that time period between December and throughout January, staff is currently backwards mapping, creating the processes and the timelines necessary in order to effectuate that January thirty-first real hard deadline. And staff may come back. I'm sure we'll be back in front of the board later in December and in January with further updates about those particulars. But, but do know that staff is taking a lot, making a lot of efforts to really work that out in detail in terms of what needs to be done by when, when the notices need to be done, when the processes need to be started in January in order to actually realize that January thirty-first date. Go ahead and go on to the next slide. And I'm turning this over back to Victoria.
All right. Thank you so much. So this is a little bit about our communications plan. You saw some of that on the timeline for our requirement and our pathways. We've got these four kind of categories that we're, we're talking about. So students not yet required to be vaccinated, you know, under twelve. Our students twelve and over who are already submitted proof of full vaccination. Those twelve and over that still need to, or those twelve and over that'll be looking at an exemption. And so we've really been working hard on this communications plan. We have a stellar communications team. I just want to send them some love for everything that they're doing. And this is just really a lot of, you know, kind of detail and high level. We wanted you to know all of the different pathways and modalities that we're using to really reach out and connect with our family. You saw those FAQs go out pretty immediately. We were already working, you know, on that survey for staff and students to submit their documents to us. We've sent messages out through Infinite Campus and HR, you know, all of the modalities of website and robocalls and social media. And then later you'll start to see some print material go home, of course, translated in all of our threshold languages. So really, you know, you'll hear about this later in our presentation, looking at these trends and these patterns, the needs and the feedback and really being responsive to the communications that we develop. And so we go to the next slide. This is a really great example of one of the things we've done. So we, we heard early on, like a lot of confusion, you know, what do I need to do? My student's eight, right? And I just want to look at that. And I just want to know, you know, what do I need to do as a parent? And so we've created this graphic and we'll be pushing this out and posting this as well. And so you can see kind of right down the column, if your student is under twelve, they're not yet required. We are asking parents, submit us that form and just select that category that says not yet required. And then make sure that you register for routine or register and participate, I should say, in routine surveillance testing. You only need to do it one time a year. So if you've already registered, you're good to go. Nothing further needed. If your student's fully vaccinated, this is where I sit as a parent. I have two students in the district and they're over twelve. Yes, they know they're vaccinated. Yes, I need to submit my form. No, they do not have to participate in that regular required testing, but they may. If you would like them to, or they would like to test, we will never turn anyone away from testing, but that's not required for them. And then students twelve and over who are not yet fully vaccinated. They have lots of choices and options. You can see there's yeses all the way down the column. So yes, we want them to be vaccinated. Yes, we need them to submit a form. There are different options for exemptions and we've included some of those that require an additional signature. And yes, they do need to register and participate in routine surveillance testing. So we're hopeful that these kinds of tools will really help folks to understand what they need to do for their each unique scenario. Next slide, please. So we also modeled this and did the same thing for our staff. And so if you'll go on to that next one. Nope, I think it went too fast. There we go. So the same thing for staff. You'll see, you know, staff fully vaccinated. Yes, you got vaccinated. Yes, you need to submit proof if you haven't reported already, because we know we had started that process earlier. No, you don't have to participate in regular routine surveillance testing, but you're more than welcome. If you're not yet fully vaccinated, again, a lot of choices for our staff. They need to submit that form. They can submit, submit their first or their second dose. They have applicable exemptions as well. And yes, they will need to participate in regular routine testing until or unless they, they become fully vaccinated. So these are the kinds of responses that we're continuing to develop and push out to our community. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief, Chief Business Officer.
Thank you, Victoria. And this is a slide, board members and members of the public that you've seen before. Just modeling some scenarios for you in the event that we experience some enrollment losses and we just picked some very broad numbers. A hundred students. Would, would that mean it'd be about a million in loss funding for the year twenty-two, twenty-three? The five hundred is about five and a half million. A thousand is about eleven point one. Next slide, please. And, and this one is a very important slide. Some really great information here. It's a data tracking system that we are utilizing through our informed K-12 process system. And what we're doing with this system is that we are tracking those students that have possibly, may make different choices about their enrollment based on possibly the vaccine mandate. And we want to know that information so that we can isolate and, and really pinpoint, you know, how many of those students that possibly left our district was due to this vaccine mandate. Then of course, we would calculate the loss of that ADA due to, to this loss of enrollment associated with the vaccination mandate. So there'll be a form out there and, you know, it's, it's populated with this information. And there's a little snippet there of what parents will choose when they choose to, to leave our district. And that will help us identify the reason for that enrollment loss of students. And I think I turn it over back to Victoria at this point.
Actually, you're turning over to me, Bob Lyons, Chief Information Officer from the district. So good evening, Board and Superintendent Aguilar. What you're seeing here is a screenshot of our student COVID dashboard with raw unverified data. And that data is based on that informed K-12 that, that Rose just explained to the board. So that this data is from, this survey was sent out last Friday, October twenty-ninth. And so we, the data has not been verified yet. So just to fill in a dashboard, we were giving you this raw data that has not been cleaned up for duplicates or verification of, of records. And that will be done by our health services team. So plan going forward next week, we will post this on the district website. And it will be published with documented data that the health services team has put into Infinite Campus, our student information system. This dashboard is important because it will help us understand compliance rates across the district and will inform us where additional efforts are needed. I will briefly explain what we're seeing here. And it does mirror our dashboard, the COVID dashboard that's already posted. But just for clarity's sake, I'm, I'm going to review what we're seeing here. So I'm using an example from Member Rhodes area and you can see that box is clicked on the, on the far right. So if you take a look at that top left box, that white box, seven thousand ninety-four, those are the number of students that are aged five and up within Member Rhodes area. So that, the next slide, the next box over, the dark blue box, this one is the, the dark blue is the vaccinated box and partially and fully vaccinated. The next box, the lighter blue box, is the one, is the box of exemptions. And these exemptions include medical, religious, or personal reasons. The orange box indicates the percent of unvaccinated students. And the black box, ninety-nine point three four percent, this is the number of unreported students. So since that survey was just sent out, this number is very high. And in that pie graph below, that pie chart, it'll list the actual numbers associated with the percentages displayed on the chart. And right now it looks all black, but there's a very small sliver of blue in there that will indicate the number of vaccinated students. The filters on the right side of the dashboard will filter by school, grade, trustee area, and age group. When filters are applied, the numbers and graphs will change to reflect the selection. To remove all filters and display district numbers, just the reset button is pushed and it will go back to the district default. The last data update is listed at the bottom of the reset button. I know this will be important. So this data is from yesterday morning about eleven o'clock. Our staff dashboard is being mocked up at this time, but it will mirror what we're seeing here with, without all of the detail, because we don't, we won't need all the grade level and those kind of things. So next up is Victoria Flores again.
All right. Thank you so much. And so this is really important data that we're really going to pay close attention to, particularly as we develop our upcoming communications. So this is a snap or a screenshot on the left here of one of the responsive communications our team created. A really simplified version of that graph almost of students eleven or younger. What do I need to do? Two steps, right? And we're trying to just really help our, our families and, and parents understand what those steps are. Or students aged twelve or over, what are those two steps? And then driving them to those FAQs should they have more questions. We're asking our school sites to send this flyer out as well as a host of other resources. So we've got both staff and student letters that will be going home kind of hard copy in multiple languages, starting November fifteenth. We're going to be doing targeted language or targeted mailers in those preferred home languages so that we know, you know, we're reaching our families as much as we can. As Raul talked us through that timeline, we're going to be doing that proactive outreach to get people to respond. So from December first, you know, throughout January, really helping to inform families about their options and what steps they will need to take. And I just want to say, you know, we're really experienced doing this here in health services. We do this for required school immunizations every school year. For T-DAP, it's the rush over summer and into fall. Kinder vaccines are all kind of throughout the year. And so this is the kind of methods that we've used all the way, you know, down to really reaching out to those specific families, doing home visits, knocking on doors. These are the kinds of things we're kind of predicting that we will, you know, need to employ again. We do this with LCFF acts as well. So many of those same strategies we will be leveraging. Next slide, please. And so just like Raul promised, I forgot to say, you know, tell you I'd be coming back to this issue of students ages five to eleven. We do know we need to make these considerations. One of the things that we're looking at, we've seen a number of recent surveys that just got released. Approximately thirty percent of parents are super excited and it's like already looked to register their child for vaccine. I know we already have appointments booking up for our clinic on Wednesday and I haven't looked yet, so I'm hoping we're not full yet. About thirty percent of our parents though really want to wait and see. They want to consult with their physician. They want to, you know, kind of expand that, that number of students who have gotten vaccinated. And then about thirty percent are telling us, no, not going to vaccinate my child. Maybe not yet. Maybe they're, you know, going to kind of waffle in between those age ranges. We also have a commitment to ensuring that our families have reasonable time to consult with their trusted medical provider or health partner. And we really want to make sure our families have access to their health providers. We know our health systems have been overwhelmed, whether it's from delaying preventative care or now the impact of COVID. And so we really want to watch that carefully. We also want to make sure we have access to clinics and vaccine for this specific age group. It is a special vial. It's not like you can mix or match or pull from, you know, an adult vial to a pediatric vial. They're labeled differently. They're different vaccine that you have to draw from. So I just want to caution us that supply chain issues are a global issue right now. We're all hearing about them in the, in the media. And, you know, we're cautiously optimistic, but COVID continues to throw us curveballs, continues to teach us humility and grace. And so this is one thing I think we just, you know, need to potentially be prepared for and, and we'll keep a close watch on. You know, the other thing that we want to consider as well is, you know, by the time we reach, we reach that November thirtieth date, we know that our twelve to fifteen-year-old age group still under emergency use authorization, but they'll have had like a solid six-plus months of data, right? We know, I think it's something around thirteen million, did I say earlier? Individuals in that age range have been vaccinated. So that's a pretty solid data set. For sixteen and over, they're actually fully authorized and they'll have been fully authorized for two months. So those are just some, you know, things that we'll want to think about and consider as we talk about five to eleven-year-olds. Next steps, or next slide, please, to go to next step, sorry. So, and so we're going to be updating that data that, that Bob talked about to report about our implementation. We're really going to be looking closely at those submission rates after that November thirtieth deadline and leading up to it, really studying and disaggregating that data, looking like, are there certain neighborhoods or schools or languages where we're not seeing that response and really tailoring our outreach to meet those needs. Continuing to target and then we'll be coming back to provide the board and, and provide an update to the board on the timeline for students five to eleven. So that concludes our presentation tonight and thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Flores. And thank you to all the staff. Um, I think we have, we don't have any live comment on this item. Is that correct?
We did not, but we've had a couple requests while the item was going on. So we have a comment from Mo Kashmiri.
Okay.
Hi, this is Mo Kashmiri. I'm the, also the labor rep for it. Hello, can you hear me? It's Mo Kashmiri.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mo.
Great. Mo Kashmiri, SCIU ten to one, labor field rep. I just wanted to say that we have asked the district, we sent a letter asking the district to sit down and negotiate with us over how this is implemented. Like everything, we think everything works better if it's negotiated collaboratively with staff instead of unitilaterally imposed down from above. And so we're hoping that this district will meet with us soon and help us negotiate in good faith so we can find a solution on this. We know we have many concerned members on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have another public comment?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Taylor. Go ahead.
Oh yeah. So this is Taylor Akata. I'm a parent of a five-year-old and a seven-year-old in the district. I just want to say the fact that my kids aren't able to get vaccines is really just one of the most exciting times that I've had in the past two years. So really excited for that and I support all your efforts to have communication in this area. I was hoping to be able to bring my kids over to Serna to get them vaccinated, but we just couldn't wait. So we're going to be at Walgreens this weekend. One issue I did want to bring up when watching this presentation is there seems to be a good plan for testing, but my experience with how testing has worked so far this school year has been that it hasn't really trickled down to the school site. My son, we've asked for him to be routinely tested, basically right after school started, but he has yet to be tested at his school site. My daughter did get tested at her school site. They have a nurse on campus, so that could be why. But it was, you know, delayed longer than the teacher said it would be. So I would just hope that as we head into a process where we're going to be requiring some kids to be routinely tested and we have others who probably will still want to be voluntarily tested, that when parents ask for that or when you're telling kids they need to have that happen, that it actually occur at the school site. But again, thank you for all your work in this and, you know, please continue with your communication efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. And do we have any other public comment?
No, that was the final comment.
Okay. Member Wu, your light is still on. Did you have? Go ahead. Oh, you already, was that from before? Okay, I got you. Don't worry. All right. Member Morowski?
Thank you. Excellent presentation as always. Really appreciate it. I guess just one, and I'm I guess just one, and I'm one of the, one of the parents of children ages five to eleven, have an eleven, oh, almost eleven-year-old and an eight-year-old. So we are absolutely thrilled to be able to get them vaccinated. They are really excited. They've been waiting for this, for this day. So we are one of those folks who will jump on board. It really, you know, I guess my, my one kind of concern is, is on the ages five to eleven and in kind of where we go with that. Every part of my being wants to just move forward with the, with the requirement for this, for this age range. I do understand the desire to have, you know, to have families have, have time to consult with, with their providers, et cetera. I have just been reading and hearing so many, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics, every pediatrician, everyone, you know, talking about this. Every pediatrician who has a child in that age range is one hundred percent committed to getting them vaccinated. You know, I don't think there's any, any question that the vaccine poses such less risk than COVID itself to children in that age range. So I'm, I'm, I still, you know, I, I trust staff. I know you're looking at the big picture. I am very supportive of moving forward with a requirement for ages five to eleven because I think we owe it to them to protect their health and their academic and, and social emotional development that is still constantly under threat from COVID, especially in this, this area where we're, we're seeing more, more cases. So I just, you know, I think this is the one time we've been able to get actually in front of this issue and to do something proactive to prevent. And so I just want to put that on record that, that I'm very supportive with, of moving forward. I, I mean, I will look to the staff recommendation on this, but I want you to know where, where I stand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Morosky, Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Victoria. This is a great presentation. I, I also want, look forward to having a more concrete timeline on when the five to eleven-year-olds will be required to be vaccinated because they are also the group that we're seeing an upward trend, right? So, so just wanting to make sure that we don't lose sight of what the goal here is, and it's to increase vaccination rate among all of those eligible. So, so just looking forward to that. I do have some questions about, some of these are just kind of maybe just simple, short questions. But I know that in one of the slides you did mention that you were going to have vaccines for five to eleven-year-olds as well at these clinics as well as the twelve plus. I'm wondering, will the, will we also have boosters available? So if a family is coming, just wondering if it's like a one stop for the entire family, if that's what they choose to do.
Yeah, that's a great question. Yes, we've already been providing boosters. So we were down last night and we had Moderna last night. And so our vaccine provider kind of brings what they have access to. But yes, we will likely have Moderna boosters and then Pfizer for first or second dose for either, you know, five to eleven or twelve and up.
Excellent, okay, that's good to hear. And then I did have just a couple more questions. Yeah, just two more questions. One is on sort of the final like number in terms of staff being vaccinated and also getting the final number of how many students are vaccinated, right? Who is coming into compliance? And just wondering what happens to, to the staff that is not vaccinated? How do we, and I think I heard that some, some of them may be potentially will get notification that inaction will lead to enrollment in, in corrective action. So, so is the idea that the staff who is not vaccinated for X reason going to be shifted to the independent study program? Or, or why, why, okay, so.
Sorry, sorry, Member Garcia, because we actually thought about this and we wanted, we thought we had clarified that bullet. It's two different populations. The independent study is for students, the corrective action is for staff. So not related, it's not about staff being shifted to independent study, if I'm understanding your question.
Okay, so then.
And is about corrective action related to employment status, which is for staff. The other one is related to independent study for students.
Okay, so then my next question is, how are we going to make sure that we're staffing up for independent study? So when we get an, once we get an idea of how many students will be shifted over to independent study, are we making sure we're matching that up with the appropriate number of staff? And wondering if part of the pool will be the staff that's unvaccinated? Just trying to kind of get to the end line.
Yeah, let me try to see if I can, if I answer and please just ask clarifying questions, Member Garcia. So if you, if, if, if you go through the online portal process, there are a series of questions. And they're designed to give us feedback on how to project staffing needs, et cetera. So one of the questions, for example, is my child is enrolled in independent study and I intend to enroll or bring back my child to in-person instruction as a, once, once he or she is vaccinated. So the current number of students, which is now a little over three hundred, who are still, still have not had a teacher assigned to them in independent study. The reason why we created the online portal the way we did is because we want to have a better understanding as they upload information about vaccinations, the status, how many families are intending to bring their students back to in-person instruction. We also ask if they intend to move them from in-person instruction, for whatever reason, to independent study. That was kind of, that was all designed so that we can start projecting and planning way before the, the beginning of the second semester for things related to staffing, for example. And, and in that regard, I do want to just, and you'll hear me say again toward the end of the presentation, I just want to encourage our board to kind of pause a little bit because I've done it over the last two weeks since you passed the resolution. The amazing cross-functionality of this group in taking a resolution and operationalizing it down to the creation of an online portal that we had to create ourselves. This is not the state or some other entity saying, you know, just pull it, pull it from here and put your logo and this is, this is how you should operationalize the uploading process, the downloading of exemption forms. This is all done. And so we felt, we, we felt that it was important to, to be able to, to have access to real-time data to project staffing needs and, 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 and related to independent study. As you saw in the timeline, if Mr., if Vincent can put it back up, we, we, we expect to do a lot of work on December first to have access to information about which, which staff members, which families we have to start to work with. And then as, as Mr. Bozio mentioned, we know that there's a gap in, in, in that dot in toward the end between December seventeenth, if you will, and January thirty-first. And we're going to come back to the board at our December board meeting and give you more specific information about that gap because we, we certainly don't want you or our community to think that we don't have anything that's going to take place and we're going to get to January thirty-first and families are, for the first time, going to be told, you know, you have to shift over to independent studies or a staff member be told you're, this is, this is the action that, you know, because you didn't submit the information. So we're still working on that backwards mapping on what would be reasonable so that nothing starts on January thirty-first. Families and staff should know what, what they should expect in terms of job placement, corrective action, and, and of course, for those that, that, that do not submit any proof of vaccination, do not submit any exemption forms that they would then have to transfer into independent study.
So I, I'm glad to hear that. I know there's a lot of planning happening and, and sometimes we just don't see it just yet. But I do, I do think that a couple of things, you know, we are an information overload. As important as this is, it's still information overload. So we do need to be reminding our, our families over and over what the consequence is, just in the opportunities that are available, right? So that they, for whatever reason, don't miss the one letter that came in the mail. I personally don't open my mail every day. I kind of like, maybe I do it on a weekly basis. So, so just making sure that we, that we give our families ample reminders. And then secondly, for many of our families who started school in person, the transition into independent study is going to be, I think, a big one. So we need to make sure that we communicate what that looks like, not what we hope it, it, it looks like, but what it looks like, right? Based on our current capacity, the, the reality of, of, of what that learning model looks like for, for their children and for that information to be available early and for that information to be available frequently so that they understand what the alternative learning model looks like if, if they choose not to vaccinate. And because I think that's, that's an important factor that families will have to take into consideration. I know, for example, my kids don't look, wouldn't learn well in an independent study model. So, so if, if I'm on the fence, I, I will, I will vaccinate because they learn best in person. So, so I just want to make sure that our families are fully aware of what the options are so that they can make the most informed decision and what's best for their family. So, and Victoria and team, thank you so much for the presentation. I know that a lot of work has gone in this. So, so just, just want to make sure. And then I guess it's progress, but, you know, we still, we still have three hundred families or three hundred students that are still waiting. So it's still, yeah, it's still not okay. So, so we need to figure out how to, how to meet the needs of those three hundred families, so.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, Member Garcia. And what I will say is, we, we will make sure that we continue to communicate what is the current status. We are very hopeful, we have made a proposal to SCTA to try to problem solve and have proposed a unique model in which teachers would volunteer to take on students in independent study and provide synchronous instruction on a daily basis, respecting also the amount of prep time that it would be required to effectively serve the needs of the students. But to your earlier point, that is what we would like to see. It's not necessarily what is done right now, and, and I take your, your comment very seriously.
Well, I, I appreciate, is my still on? Oh, I, I appreciate that feedback. I think it's important for our families to know that we're trying to find solutions, but these are all solutions that need to be agreed upon. And I know this is something that, you know, SCTA also asked for. So I'm, I'm hopeful that this is going to be agreed upon sooner rather than later so our families know exactly what to expect and our teachers as well and the rest of the workforce. So, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, I just have one question to the follow-up to Member Garcia's in regard to the notification to our, mainly our students is really what I'm thinking. Are, is there a letter that's going out and via mail? And then also a notification via Infinite Campus? Is that how they're being notified?
I, I will defer to, to our team. We do have, I think, our communications team. We have created a pretty robust communications plan that involves sending text messages to our families, including backpack notes, of course, posting information through e-connections and robo-calls as well. But, but I'm going to defer to our team to provide more details in terms of the, the complete communications plan. But we, we understand that this is a critical body of work where we, we want to over-communicate and not under-communicate.
Yeah, and before, before you hand it over, Superintendent, I just wanted to say, the reason why I'm asking is I can think of a lot of, like I have an area that I represent that has a lot of transient families that move around quite a bit. And so I kind of want to just hear how we're going to ensure that those families are getting the notification that's needed.
Yeah, I think I can, I can jump in and take this one. You know, we are going to be really mindful of that, and that's part of that data dashboard that our, our chief, you know, information officer, Bob Lyons, shared with us, where we can get down to that granular level of what are those schools? What are those student populations that we've not yet reached? And I mean, I really wasn't joking about going and knocking on doors. When I served out at a school site, Rosa Parks Middle School back then, it's been a while. It was T DAP, right? And you couldn't start school without T DAP. And we would literally go knock on doors and talk with parents, get them to sign the authorization or whatever was applicable. And I do anticipate we might need to get down to that level. Fortunately, we've got lots of support staff that are on board. We have our whole homeless services team, our foster youth team. We know we have student populations that are particularly vulnerable to that, you know, access and information gap. And so we are planning out to do that kind of targeted outreach. And if you hear, you know of areas we're missing, we really do want to know so that we can, we can really, you know, kind of have that multi-tiered approach, right? This is what we're doing with our, our supports in schools as well as how we support our families.
Thank you, I can appreciate that. And if you're knocking on doors, please be careful, be out there. All right, that was the only question I had. I just want to make sure that it's no surprise to anybody at, at any point of the process. So with that, I don't see any other questions on the floor. So this is an informational item, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this a lot in the future, Superintendent.
If I can just, again, just highlight our team and specifically the dashboard, the development of the dashboard and the importance of making sure that we have a public-facing dashboard. So this is not just an internal dashboard. We envision this as something that will live on our website so that our entire community can access this information. I, I, I expect that we, we've always been very committed to research-practice partnerships, and I, I suspect that there will be others that want to access that information and help us improve on our work. We are very open to that type of partnership. But it is important, I think, for us to be very transparent and have a public-facing dashboard. Again, I just want to recognize our team, Bob Lyons and his team, for developing that with, in, in, in about two weeks. Because again, this is not a template. It's not something that we were able to pull from some kind of state entity and just, you know, you don't have to worry about it. You can just populate information and then, and then here's the link to make it public-facing for your district. So that, that just took a lot of effort, and I want to just recognize we will be able to drive a lot of our work based on the information that is, is populating that dashboard. So again, just really kudos to this cross-functionality that's, that's, that's happening. I, I know throughout districts, but it, it really is nice to see in an organization as large as ours, the amount of white space work, the work between organizational charts, boxes. And in this case, you saw that the need for our IT, our health services, our legal counsel, our CBO, and, and many other folks that continue to work collaboratively to make sure that we operationalize this, this effort successfully.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, staffer, your hard work. All right, item eight point four, trustee area registries being full demographic presentation with map options. For Reynolds.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, go right ahead, thanks.
Great, well, thanks for the opportunity to re-present the trustee boundary maps this evening. We have made a few adjustments to the presentation based on the input from. this evening. We have made a few adjustments to the presentation based on the input from last time. So we'll go to the next slide. Again, the presentation tonight is very similar to before. We're going to show you some options for rebalancing the population to comply with the Voting Rights Act. So let's go to the next slide. On these first maps, one of the things we've done is we have a legend so that the board and members of the public can readily identify, we mentioned each area, which trustee represents that area currently. And so the colors on the map represent the areas that would be provided, the, the members of that area would elect the representative from that area. So again, the colors on these maps are illustrating what the new trustee areas would, would look like, whereas these white borderlines represent what the previous boundaries looked like. And then the next one, we, on the next slide, we zoom in a little bit, and we identify the areas that are changing from the current boundaries to the new boundaries. And so we could see Area 2, the yellow area, is, needs to shrink a little bit. And so the red and orange areas encroached on the yellow area. So again, we have notes identifying which areas are changing, and of course, the legend to represent which board members would be impacted by those adjustments. The other thing we've added is notes on the following slide that mention which schools are in any of the areas that are changing. So for example, there was a slight adjustment between Area 1 and 6 that impacted the Juan Cabrillo campus and Sam Brandon campus. Again, this is just to help you identify, you know, these small neighborhoods that are changing, you know, is that a certain school in that particular location? Obviously, that red area that expanded Area 4 into Area 2 was, Hiram Johnson High School was right in that location. And then right next to it, that orange area included Tahoe Elementary, which helps you get a better identified some of the areas that are changing. And on the next slide, we have an overlay showing the high school boundary lines. So the blue lines you see on this screen are the high school boundary lines. So we can see, you know, up in the northeast area, we have the Rosemont Boundary. And so both Area, trustee Area 3 and Area 2 have components of that Rosemont feeder area. And so again, it just helps you, again, identify what those high school boundary lines look like in comparison to the trustee boundary lines. Then the next slide, again, this is the statistics from the census, the 2020 census data. So again, the same as last time, we show the total population and how it breaks down by trustee area. We compare that to the ideal population to calculate the deviation. Now, in all the maps we're showing you, our peak deviation is relatively small. We're in that 2% range. So these are very balanced populations. And that was really our goal in creating these maps is to try to balance those numbers as much as possible because a lot can change over 10 years. Let's go to the next slide. And again, we have all of the racial and ethnic statistics for the total population, the 18 and over population, and the citizen voting age population, all broken down by the actual population counts and the percentage of the totals. And just for your information, in all of these scenarios we've created for you, we've minimized any demographic changes. So if, if a certain area has a certain percentage, you know, of Asians, that, that really doesn't change any more than about 1% between all the various scenarios compared, and in comparison to what the current numbers are. Again, it's, it's a very equitable and balanced adjustment that does not really create an advantage or disadvantage to any minority group. So let's go to the next slide. Here we have, again, Map B. Again, it's slightly different than Map A. Again, trying to come up with how do we balance the population between Areas 2, 4, and 7 was the, the biggest challenge because that's where the biggest amount of change was needed to create balanced populations. And so if we go to the next slide, again, it will show the detail of the changes that are taking place. I do want to point out two little areas that were the same in all three maps. In the top right-hand corner, we can see Area 3 expanded just a little bit into Area 2. And so the new, the new boundary line is right along La Riviera Drive instead of running right behind it. And then the other change was down over on the west side. Area 1 shrunk a little bit, and Area 6 grew a little bit. And again, that's where Sam Brandon is, right in where that arrow's pointing just about. And so those changes, along with, you know, the main changes we're seeing in the yellow, orange, and red areas are the areas of, that we've really focused on to create balance. When we go to the next slide, again, it mentions the schools that were impacted. And in this one, the Language Academy of Sacramento changed from Area 2 to Area 7. And then again, the change between 1 and 6 is common to all the plans. And then the next slides will show us again, the high school boundary lines and how those align with the trustee areas. And then the next slide shows all of the demographic statistics. Again, we're about 2.48% of a peak deviation here. So again, a very balanced scenario. And then again, we show all the Hispanic and Asian and African-American statistics on the following page. And again, th- those numbers are almost within 1% of each of the scenarios. So there was, again, only minor negligible differences. And then our next one will be Map C. In Map C, we didn't adjust the northern boundary to Area 4 like we did in the other scenarios. Instead, in this scenario, we moved into Area 7 from Area 4. And so only Area 7 then encroached in Area 2 up north. So again, the next page will show the detail of those changes. And again, you can see that block, that, that red block that encroached on Area 7 is, there's no schools located in that block, but it is getting close to Pacifica. And then on the next page, again, we just identified the schools. So in that orange area where Area 7 grew into Area 2, both Tahoe Elementary and the Language Academy of Sacramento are located within that block. And then the high school boundary lines are shown here on this page. Again, we, we did include the legend of trustees on all these maps for anyone referencing these later on. Then the next page is, again, the statistics. So again, this one is a slightly higher deviation, but still in that 2% range at 2.66%. Again, very balanced numbers. And then the following page gives us all of the racial and ethnic details. And then we, I did expand our summary notes here. Again, gives you a little bit more information on what the changes were. And at the bottom of this page, it says no changes were made to Area 5 in any of the plans. And then the minor changes that we made to Areas 1, 3, and 6 were the same for each plan. So really, the areas that needed more of a major adjustment were Areas 2, 4, and 7. So those are the ones that really have some choices for you to explore. And then I think we have, oh yeah, here at the end, we have all three maps in a row. So as we scroll through the maps, you can actually physically see the map change on the screen. So it gives you a better reference to see how those changes take place. So again, whether you're looking at this at a different point in time, if you flip back and forth between these three pages, you get a grasp for those areas that are changing. And so again, it's probably a challenging decision, you know, which, which one do you like best? And again, my thoughts are, you know, if, if you're better connected or think you can better represent those particular areas, then I think that would be perhaps a way to identify perhaps which scenario might be best for the community. And then at the end of that, again, we've created these maps for your consideration. We look forward to any feedback. We're going to be having community meetings. And again, any input you can provide us tonight, and we can create additional maps if needed. But I think these are all great maps if one of them is ready for, to move forward at a future meeting. With that, I'd like to end up the questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Ken. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have three public comments. The first comment is from Mo Cashmary.
Hi, this is Mo Cashmary. Just want to commend the board on this work and, you know, looking forward to hearing when exactly those community meetings will actually be submitted. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mo. Next comment?
Our next public comment is from Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again. Looking at the maps and obviously being a parent of children who matriculate through Cabrillo and Brandon, that's a touchy situation because we've always sort of been on the southern tip of Area 1 and been neglected because we haven't been served by a Lampark Course-centered trustee area. And while Brandon literally serves the entire Pocket area, that would better align us with Area 6. So I've always voted in Area 6 but have not had representation from a school board member for whom I voted. But it begs the question, right? We're, we're focusing on trustee areas based on student residence when we know that we're a transient district because of open enrollment. But there's been a lack of a commitment from our board to align our school attendance and school policies in terms of open enrollment with actual residents. So how are we focused on voting and representation when we won't even ask the question if open enrollment has served our students effectively? And I'm not saying, you know, I have my thoughts on the impacts of open enrollment, as do many members in the community, but we need you guys to actually be courageous enough to explore it. Don't try to explain away based on assumptions anymore than I have my own assumptions about the impacts based on what I've seen. Be courageous enough to say, you know what? This is what I believe. I believe it is programmatic choice. I believe certain schools serve students better, but I'm going to prove it by exploring in detail and data and research to prove what I believe, not just stand on assumptions and be afraid that people are going to leave the district or people are going to migrate. That's your role. If we're data-centric district, stand on data, but I haven't seen any. So please produce some. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our final speaker is Rich Vasquez.
Good evening, board members. I guess there's a lot to go into this stuff. I'm just telling my experience as far as being highly involved, being all in this stuff. Again, my residence is in Oak Park, and the low, the school, my neighborhood school is Tahoe Elementary. So we're crossing into another neighborhood. And Father Keith B. Kenny is closer than Tahoe. So I know this is probably not a trustee area, but you need to start looking into aligning these things. Even right now, I feel like, you know, trustee Phillips is my, who I vote for, but I have no communication with her or anything. And then my, my neighborhood schools are across Stockton Boulevard, so Hiram Johnson, Tahoe Elementary. And I just feel like there's no representation right in there. It's just like, you know, like, why are we in Oak Park and then we're going all the way over here? Philip, you need to really start looking at your schools and see if they're even feasible. Why do we have all these Oak Park kids and families going into Tahoe Park because they don't want to go to their school? That's what I've lived, and it's not fair. And why are we filling up another school? We need to have these kids going over to Keith B. Kenny near their neighborhood. And right, everything's about money. So you're spreading out the money too long. We need all these kids in Oak Park to go to the same school so that we could build our school up. And we can't be filling up other people's schools because they don't like it. They need to go to their own school. Tahoe Park, start going to your own school. You couldn't have enough filling up your schools just to have a school in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Member Phillips.
Okay, Mr. Vasquez, I got it. It does make sense that a lot of children move from Area 7 into other areas. Just looking at the map, and I'm just, you know, Map C, Map C is a big transition. And I think a lot of our dividing areas have to do with the streets, not necessarily the trustee areas. So like, just like what Mr. Vasquez said, is that he lives in Oak Park. I live across the street from Father Keith B. Kenny. And a lot of kids in my neighborhood are, are getting into cars and going to other schools. They're not staying in our neighborhood. So, I mean, any way you look at it, we, we still don't have a comprehensive high school. We're missing a lot of, I guess, a lot of connectivity in the community. So I'm, as a parent of a child who did not go to his assigned high school, I, I understand. But the improvement in the schools that we need in the area would probably make a bigger difference in whether our students stay there. That means, again, that we have to spend money. That means, again, that we have to do the right thing and make sure that our students are, are able to go to, to their neighborhood school and get a quality education. And I know that even if that is happening at some of the schools in Area 7 that I'm talking about, it's not happening as much as we, we'd like. We have children not in their neighborhood schools. But I realize that that's the way this district is set up right now. It's possible that we could, you know, look into something different in terms of how children can freely enroll in schools wherever they want, pretty much in this district. And it is causing a problem in Area 7. But, you know, you can add more schools, but, you know, it's, it's a matter of, this is, let me put it to you this way. Area 7 is a, in Map C, is a huge area that already lacks, lacks, I mean, is severely lacking in representation. You know, when I hear you guys all talk, oh, my constituents came to me. My constituents do not come to me. So I'm kind of forced to, to reach out. But, you know, it is a difficult thing, probably because we have a lot of people working and, and whatnot. But, I mean, all these maps don't necessarily make a difference because the children are not there. They're not in this area. They're somewhere else. So, you know, I hear what you say, Mr. Vasquez. You got my number. You can call me. But I, I do think that we need to make sure that our children can walk to school and can participate in their neighborhood school and play with their school friends in the front yard because they all go to the same school. But that's something that we really are going to have to work on. And just like Mr. Mr. Gladney said, you know, someone's going to have to take the risk. We're going to have to dive in and really show how this is going to make a change. Right now, it's, if this has to do with, you know, I don't know, voting numbers, but I, we just need the kids to stay where they need to be. And that's in their home schools, in their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Member Phillips. I agree. I lived on a street where my friends, my, my best friends lived right across the street, and they went to a different school than I did. That it, it separated right on the street. So I totally understand. I do just want to remind us that we, this is only about the voting area of the trustees and not a redistricting of our children in their home schools.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure we understood. Okay, gotcha.
Sorry. It's still, it's still equally as frustrating because, again, Area 7 is lacking in so many things like a middle school and a high school. You know, I do see the move in Map C to move the Language Academy in Tahoe Park. I just, I don't know. You can make an area as big as you can, but if people don't want to send their kids to school there, then those kids are not going to go to school there. We need to make sure the schools are better.
Agreed. All right.
It costs money.
Are there any other comments? All right, not seeing any on the floor. This, oh, Member Morosky?
I do. I just, I just want to say, I mean, I, looking at, at these in terms of how it impact Area 1, all of them, you know, like, a lot of folks have moved into Area 1. I think, you know, it's appropriate to rebalance the, the district. I, you know, kind of feel sad to lose John Cabrillo and Sam Brandon and the Little Pocket area. And all of those maps have the, the same. And, you know, I just wanted to say- And, you know, I just wanted to say it's, it feels appropriate. You know, it is, it is this, it's, it's kind of on the border, right? Between Southland Park and, and the Pocket. So as much as, you know, kind of, I personally feel sad to, you know, to, to have that kind of area go to the Area 6. It, it looks like, you know, it's probably the right thing to do, all things considered. So I, I just want to say, like, it, it looks like all of, like, most of the decision points are between Area 7, 4, and 2. So I would kind of look to, to those trustees to, to maybe talk and look at the community and just figure out, like, you know, what, where, what connects better? You know, in terms of, to, to the different districts? So.
Yeah.
I think they're all, you know, to me, they're all supportable and, and, you know, be fine with moving forward with any of them.
Thank you.
But I, I do wonder about next steps, though?
Yeah, I, so I do have a question about the next step. And, and first, I, well, in terms of the community meetings, Mr. Reynolds, I hope that you'll work with staff here to, and with our superintendent to reach out to every single board member and for us to attend the, the community meetings alongside with our colleague and not just the specific board members for those areas. I think I, I would like to attend those as well if we so choose to. If you could keep us updated. And can you tell us when those, like, those steps and like, when we're thinking about that would start happening?
I was asked earlier today if, if we could try and schedule those for Monday and Tuesday next week.
Wait, what?
That's, that's what I recall.
That's our current, our current thinking is that we would put out a notice to the community tomorrow and have these meetings via Zoom on Monday and Tuesday evening, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. There, there's not a requirement that we have a community meeting in every trustee area. Just that we do reach out to the community. So that's our current planning and thinking. But certainly welcome any feedback from the board.
So can I just say that I, I agree that it probably does not need to be in every single trustee area because, unless my board disagrees, because some of us are small slivers of change. But I do not think that. I mean, you can have, offer a meeting, but I think that there needs to be additional meetings that need to happen, giving just a few days' notice for, for a meeting that could potentially be a big change in a voting area, that I could see how that can cause a little friction. So, Member Rhodes?
No, I, I disagree with you, what you're saying. I, I think that the, the community engagement piece is going to be critical. And, you know, two days' notice. We might be able to stand up a couple Zoom meetings there. But I think there should be other opportunities for parents to even, at their school sites, to have the, like, a coffee chat outside, something to where we're, we're really trying to be intentional about engaging them around the subject, especially in those trustee areas. And then also for, for us and my, my colleagues to be able to join in and to really hear the concerns across the district. So we can, we can better kind of tune into what the community is saying, even in places that we don't represent. Because, like has been mentioned before, students travel all over the district. And so it impacts greatly across. So I would suggest that we have more intensive community outreach going forward.
And I agree with you.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I, I would like to echo that we do something a little bit more expansive than just two and, and not so soon, right? We, I think we, we need to give the community an opportunity to provide feedback. You know, Area 2 is going to be impacted anyway, any map you consider. So I do want to hear from the community to hear what they think, you know, how, which plan should move forward. So I think that's really important. I do think that if, if, I mean, I don't expect for a, a community input session to be at every single trustee area, but if we can double them up but certainly have a presence in the areas that are going to be most impacted. Yeah, so I just, I'll just leave it at that because I do, I mean, I do have thoughts, but I really want to hear from the community. I think that's really going to be the most important thing for me as opposed to sort of, you know, just sharing my own thoughts. It's, it's really about what the community feels they, they'd like to see. So thank you. And a timeline would be great. I know that at some point early next year, we need to submit something to the SAC County Office of Ed. But, but I think if you can just remind us sort of when we need to adopt something because we're going into the holidays. And I know that makes it hard in terms of community participation. But I, I do want to be a little bit less hurried with, with this particular issue.
Yep, the, the deadline to approve a map is the end of February.
Okay, and I, I do like, thank you, Member Garcia. I, I totally agree. We could double up on meetings, especially with, like, connecting areas. And, you know, having one meeting with the connecting area, especially those that are mostly impacted, for sure. Okay, well, good, not seeing any other comment. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your hard work on this and the different choices. I, I gotta tell you, I expected to see something a little different, so I was quite surprised. So thank you for your hard work. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
All right. 9.0 Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives, 9.1 Fiscal Recovery Plan. Mr. Ramos?
Yes, thank you, President Pritchett and members of the board. Tonight, we're presenting to you, well, I'm presenting to you an update on the fiscal recovery plan that we've been sharing for the last couple of years. Next slide, please. Here's an overview of tonight's presentation. We're going to take you briefly just through the history and background of the district's budget, the, the current district's budget status, including the multi-year projections. And please note that this information is based on the district's 21, 22 adopted budget, updated with the state enacted budget changes and the beginning fund balances. Then we'll spend a little bit of time discover, discussing the fiscal recovery plan and move into a Q and A. And then with the final reminder that board action is required by the December 16, 2021 board meeting. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background and just to provide some definitions on some of the terms that we will be sharing tonight, just so that everyone understands the terminology and what these mean. The structural deficit, what that, that means is that this happens when our, our ongoing expenditures exceed ongoing revenue. So basically, it's just when you're not bringing in enough revenue to support your expenses. One-time resources are simply that funding is just one time, it's not recurring. Examples are donations, a grant, or carryover funds. And you may recall that the board did take action in March 4th of this year to revise Board Policy 3100 regarding the use of one-time funds, that they are not to be used for ongoing expenditures unless board approved. Of course, this is a summarized version of what that full board policy revision states, but just in a nutshell, this is basically what it says. The other definition are reserves. Our reserves are created when our revenues exceed our expenses, and they're also sometimes used as a source of one-time funds. However, K-12 districts maintain reserves for a couple of reasons. Two of the most common are, of course, to satisfy the required reserve, the state reserve, which is titled the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. And there's different percentages depending on the size of your district. For the size of SAC City Unified, our required percentage is 2% of the total general fund budgeted expenditures. And then often, districts will also have an additional reserve on top of that just to protect against any revenue shortfalls or an unpredicted expenditure. This is to provide a safety net. And this board also took action at that same board meeting on March 4th to increase the reserves from the 2% to 5%. And this would be effective the 2022, 23, or after the deficit is eliminated. Next slide, please. A little bit of history and background on the district's budget. As we've been sharing with you, the district's budget has been operating a structural deficit for several years due to ongoing expenses exceeding ongoing revenues. And again, I'm going to emphasize the word "the district's budget." These are our projections. And has, we've also shared with you that for fiscal years 2019, 20, 2021, the district did end both of those years with surpluses. And this was a result of one-time savings due to less spending because of COVID-19. We shut down the majority of our campuses and many of our offices, and therefore, we did not incur regular operating expenses like utility bills, some of the supplies, some of the staffing, for example, substitute costs over time because staff was not working onsite during much of this period. And so the district, like many districts actually across the country, realized one-time savings. And the district has managed the deficit with one-time sources and, and reserves. And of course, this plan, as we've shared with you, is not sustainable because these resources will eventually run out. You know, they're, they're not recurring. They're just savings. It's just like if you're using your savings to offset your shortfall in your monthly budget. Our, our employee salaries and benefits on the unrestricted side account for about 91% at this point in time of the unrestricted budget, which is very high. At one point, the, the goal for many districts in California was roughly about 80%. But what we're seeing that many districts in California are struggling with this because of the increased costs when it comes to pensions and step-in column. And the revenue is just not sufficient to keep pace with these increased costs. And of course, our district's benefit structure for active employees and retirees is one of the highest in the region. We've shared data with you to compare us to other districts that are similar to ours. And as I stated, our salaries and benefits to continue to increase year after year, but our revenue does not increase at the same rate or does remain flat, if, if we're fortunate enough for it, for it to remain flat. Next slide, please. And again, this is a slide, just a little bit more history of budget adjustments that had been implemented in prior years going back to 1819. And we just summarized them here in one, in one chart for you. The first, the second column there are some of the ongoing reductions the district did implement. The second one are some of the one-time. So pretty substantial amounts, as you can see. And the total between those two is over, you know, $60 million. So there, and this is in the unrestricted side with a little bit of some of the restricted expenses as well. Next slide, please. And then, earlier this year, for the budget year 2021, 22, the board also took action on February 4th to implement some budget reductions and some budget adjustments. And we say adjustments because some of these items were not, were not totally eliminated or reduced, but they were shifted to some of our one-time funding sources. And so the bottom half share, shows those that were shifted, and the top half shows that some of those that were eliminated for a total of $4.5 million. Next slide, please. And here is our current NYPD, our multi-year projection. As I stated earlier, it's based on our adopted budget with the updates from the state enacted budget and then our updated beginning balance. The difference with this slide is that we've also added in the decline in enrollment, which we are experiencing right now. It's about 1,600 students that we were not anticipating a decline for. We, this was, came to as a surprise for us. We expected the majority of our students to come back with that small decline that we had been projecting of about 180 to 200 students. So as a result of that, as you can see, that our deficit is, has increased substantially from what you saw last at adopted budget. And, you know, I want to call attention to that. That is that shaded row there in red letters. And what you're seeing is the deficit increasing year after year, although our ending balance is quite high at $103 million, which is very fortunate. But what you're seeing is that that is depleting also over time. And that's because our unfunded expenses are eating away. It's similar to your savings. Let's say that, you know, for whatever reason, your revenue in your household takes a, a drop or your expenses exceed your income that you're bringing into your household, but you have enough in your savings to sustain you for about six months. Unless you do something to replace that revenue or to decrease those expenses, you're eventually going to deplete your savings to a point where you have diminished it completely. And so right now, the district is at a good opportunity to implement some changes in our spending to, in order to, to mitigate this deficit. We do have the reserves enough to support the district for the next couple of years. But at some point, unless we do something differently, we're going to deplete those savings as well. Next slide, please. So these are the consequences if we don't achieve our reductions. Of course, as I said earlier, our cash balances will deteriorate. Our ending fund balance eventually will diminish to zero and will be unable to satisfy our obligations, meaning pay for all of our expenses. Next slide, please. And so the fiscal, fiscal recovery plan that we, I'm going to be sharing with you, we have a couple of them. We're, we're going to share with you some scenarios for eliminating the deficit and then those items that are subject to negotiations. Some from the central department programs, some school site programs that we've considered in the past. And then also some staffing ratios that are above the formula or the CBA that we've also shared with you in the past. And then our Chief Human Resource Officer, Consey McCarn, will also share with you the new classified layoff process. Next slide, please. So this first one is the, is one scenario. Let's just say that, you know, we're able to implement the full deficit of $39.3 million next year, 22, 23. That's what's shown there in that salmon box in the center of this chart, the 39.3 reduction. If we implement that, problem solved, our deficit is gone. And that would be an ongoing reduction, of course. And as you'll, you see that very bottom row there, this is what it does to our deficit. Assuming that we could implement that, it would reduce the deficit to a surplus Assuming that we could implement that, it would reduce the deficit to a surplus of $4.5 million the next year, that almost goes away and we're almost at a break-even point. And then, again, this is that using the enrollment, the lower enrollment of 38,000 or ADA, excuse me. Next slide, please. And this scenario breaks up that deficit target, that 39.3 million into, in half. So we implement reductions of 19.6 next year and then the following year we implement the balance. So you have the opportunity to slowly implement a deficit reduction plan that doesn't, you know, that isn't just so drastic, the 39.3, which is probably very difficult to achieve in just one year. And again, we have the ability to do this because right now we do have reserves to sustain us, but we don't want to wait until the end when our reserves get depleted completely. And then, you know, we're faced with a situation where we have to hurry up and make some very drastic reductions. So having the time to implement some reductions gives us that opportunity to be very thoughtful about, you know, what areas we potentially consider for a reduction, as difficult as they all are. I totally agree. We have implemented a lot of reductions in the last few years. Next slide, please. So here's one slide you've seen in the past. These are the items that are subject to negotiations. They've all been updated with current data. And of course, this slide does not indicate like this is something we would implement all of these because this is more of a menu. And you'll see they're duplicates at different rates. The first two are health benefits at different, assuming different models. The first one is 100% employee of any plan and then 75% of the Kaiser rate that would generate savings of about, almost close to $18 million. The second one is 100% of employee using the Kaiser rate for all of those different choices. And that would generate about 18.7. And then we also looked at dental and vision and we said, what if we reduce that to 80% per tier? That would save just about a little over $1 million, .4 million. And then same thing, looking at dental and vision, reducing it to only employee, it'd save almost $3 million per year. And then we also considered a cash in lieu of. Many organizations offer a cash in lieu of. This is where instead of an employee taking the organization's benefits, they may have a benefit option elsewhere, they would get a cash payment every month. And in this case, we modeled a $400 per month, assuming a 30% participation of our current employees who are taking benefits and would generate a little bit over a million in savings per year. And if we offered 500, that would increase, that would decrease, sorry, to just a million per year. And then we looked at furlough days, which we looked at last year as well. What would the value of that be? That would be about 1.8. If we implemented a 1% salary reduction across the board, it would be about $3.5 million savings. So again, these items are all subject to negotiations and they're just here for your information, just so you can see what kind of savings we could generate from these, from any one of these. Next slide, please. And something we want to share with you before we go into the other categories, very important considerations that are new. We didn't share these with you last time because a couple of these, not all of them, except the first one is not new. The remaining bullets are new and they're a result of the state enacted budget. The first one is just something we do every single year. We just want to remind the board that there are several items that are part of the normal budget development process or just routine matters where we do align staffing to enrollment. And that's why we shared that 1,600 drop because of course then we would accordingly adjust our FTE according to the new projected enrollment. And that'll happen during budget development. But these other two are very important considerations. Supplemental concentration funds now are being treated a little bit more like restricted resources. In the past, we had some flexibility. They are intended to provide additional services, but in the past, there wasn't as tight restrictions as now have been implemented. And now with these funds, they must be spent to improve or increase services to identify students. And any funds that are left at the end of the year that are not spent in that manner must be carried over and accumulated until they're spent on those particular supplemental items. So they can't be spent on base programs anymore. And that's really important because sometimes we have flexibility to apply them to some of our base program areas. And this is especially true now for the additional concentration funds that did come with the state enacted budget. These also have to be spent to increase school site staffing. And this is very specific. These funds must be spent on those schools that generate the additional concentration funds. And so there's a ratio that we're going to have to compare what the FTE was at these particular schools in the prior year compared to the current year to show that we really did increase those ratios in staffing. And the staffing is not limited to teachers. It can be applied to counselors or other support staffs such as custodians and it's listed in the state enacted budget language. So as I present these following slides to you, you're going to hear two categories, base and supplemental and concentration. And so something that we had not shared before. And we have separated out those items that are currently funded with supplemental concentration. And we've done that because if, for whatever reason, the board takes action to reduce any items that are funded with supplemental concentration, those funds will not be able to be used to assist in the deficit or to shore up our reserves. Those funds will have to remain unspent until we find categories that satisfy the criteria of supplemental concentration, if that makes sense. They're kind of being treated like Title I. If we don't spend Title I on Title I activities, we have to carry them over and they must be spent on Title I activities. Next slide, please. So here are central departments and district-wide. And here, you're seeing that definition and the separation down at the bottom, the last three rows where we have identified those items that are funded with base that can be, those, if assuming they were reduced, those would assist the deficit in being reduced. And then there's a small portion that's being funded with supplemental concentration, 2.4. And so again, this is a slide you've seen before. Again, implementing some reductions at the central office level, 15% in staffing reductions. And what that would mean essentially is that, you know, 15% work would not be able to be done. And we've taken many reductions at the central offices, as you've heard before. Another item is the 20% central office discretionary accounts. This would be your supplies, your contracts and your services. And then this textbook adoption. Now, this one wasn't necessarily indicating to not adopt textbooks. But if we were to move to an online platform, which we have done in the past year and a half under COVID, many of those services were purchased with some of our SIR funds. So depending on how much we're able to purchase in that manner, we may be able to shift some of this cost to some of our SIR funds in order to increase our learning for students and reach more students through online resources. And this next one, our teacher induction also is not necessarily a reduction, but an opportunity to shift this cost to the new educator effectiveness grant that we were just awarded, which is a little bit over $8 million. And it's a grant for five years and this $243,000 represents an annual expense. And so we would propose that we would move this expense to the educator effectiveness grant for five years and therefore saving the unrestricted general fund these monies. And then this next one for $6.9 million, staffing adjustment to the enrollment decline. I've already explained that this is part of the normal budget process that, you know, we align our staffing to our enrollment. And so again, that one would happen through budget development. And the last two are funded through S and C. So assuming the board took action to reduce those last two of 1.9 and $551,000, what would happen then is that those two amounts would have to be spent on other activities that satisfy supplemental concentration activities. So it would not save any funding, any money for the unrestricted general fund or decrease the deficit. So again, just really important to clarify that this time around. Next slide, please.
Ms. Ramos, if we can pause this for a little bit.
Yes.
Vincent, and we hadn't really planned it this way, but I'm just realizing that this is a lot of information. The previous slide where Ms. Ramos explained to the board what you would be starting to see in terms of legends in line items, I think justifies kind of just pausing a little bit and asking the board if you need further explanation because there's a series of additional slides that are going to continue with that theme of base versus non-base. So I just want to, President, just give the board an opportunity to pause here and ask any questions, clarify, ask any clarifying questions before Ms. Ramos continues.
Member Phillips?
Just a couple of questions. I was hoping that you could go back to slide 10 and explain that again.
Slide 10. So with this slide, this is just a scenario. The top line in red, obviously those are our projected deficits, starting with this year 21, 22. We're projecting a deficit of $2.194 million. The second year, which is 22, 23, it's about 34.7 and the final year, 39.2. And then with that 39.3 million in that salmon-colored box represents, it's assuming that we were able to implement reductions equal to that amount. And if we were able to do that, that would be obviously effective the July 1 of the coming year, which is 22, 23. And it would be ongoing reductions in that amount. So when we apply that to this deficit, it pretty much wipes it out, right? It wipes it out and you'll see that by the bottom line where it says, what is your revised surplus or deficit spending after you apply that reduction? And so for that second year, 22, 23, assuming we applied that 39.3, we would have left over $4.5 million at the end of the year.
Okay, so I'm thinking, do we really have a plan for doing this? Even if it's over two different years? Do we, I mean, this $40 million that we have to find somewhere to cut? And I'm just, my question is, I mean, it's projected, it's projected. But is it? And maybe I'm asking the question wrong, but I'm just curious if we can actually fix this.
Yeah, that's a fair question, Member Phillips. So I did pause Ms. Ramos before we got to the information that would provide details about ideas that we have, which are coming after I pause to answer your question.
Okay, so we're going to be talking about LCAP.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to also remind our board, those of you who have been here for more than three years, what we've done over those three years. And for our new board members, an explanation really for you to know what happened before you started your role as board members. So it'll be a bit of a reminder for some of you and for others, just hopefully an explanation of what we've done and where we think there might be some opportunities still for us to get to what you're saying, Member Phillips, which is how would we address this?
Member Morosky?
Yes, thanks. Just, you know, in looking at the preview real quick, I just, I was hoping that we could, you could maybe explain as you're going through why some of the supplemental concentration line items are included here, given that it doesn't address the deficit.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, good question. Can we go back to slide 15, if there are no more questions on that slide? Thank you. Okay, so here's an example of one that has pretty much, you know, the majority of the expenses here are supplemental concentration. So why do we have them here if, you know, they're not going to assist and why would they be options? We just put them here because these were items that were included in the previous fiscal recovery plans that we had discussed in the previous two years. And our title says that, they were considered in previous fiscal recovery plan discussions. And these items are not impacted by the CBA or by some of the ratios. They're just additional, they're supplemental programs that we invest in. In the past, when we had shared these with you, we had some flexibility with supplemental and concentration and we were able to use them for some of our other programs, some of our base programs or if they fell to the ending fund balance, meaning if we had funding left over at the end of the year in supplemental concentration, we were able to scoop that up and keep it in the ending fund balance and shore up our reserves. But we can't do that anymore. And so we didn't want to not present this slide and it be a question, what happened to all those other items that we were used to seeing in the past? And so it was simply just to be transparent and just to show how much really we have funded with, you know, now semi-restricted programs and how little there is left that's being funded really out of base. And in this particular case, it's very little. You'll see it's only $900,000 and the majority of these programs are funded with S and C. Now, what the board and of course can do is can choose to fund something different. You know, instead maybe what, you know, one of these items or a couple of these items that are funded with S and C, not fund them and fund a different program that qualifies under S and C. But I am not proposing that, I'm just saying that those are the options because the funds cannot be used for any kind of base program or for shoring up reserves. I hope that answered that.
Yeah, Member Morosky?
Well, yes, thank you. And I can hold my question. I just wanted to make sure, if I'm understanding you correctly, those S and C funds, they have to be additive. In other words, they can't replace something that's already happening.
That's correct.
They can't supplant current funding. So whatever it is, if we say we wanted to fund counselors instead of some of these programs that are currently funded with S and C, it would have to be additional counselors to what we have now. Is that correct?
It would be additional to our base, right? Like we have, our base is based on ratios. So, and because our enrollment dropped, so maybe perhaps our counselors might drop as well because we don't have enough students anymore to support what we currently have. I'm just giving you an example. And so at that point then, you could, you know, increase the counselors above your base if that was, you know, the preference, using S and C dollars.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, you can move on, Ms. Ramos, thank you.
Yes, next slide, please. I'm almost done. And here, again, this is a slide, again, the same reason we're showing it is you've seen this slide in the past and these are our positions that are staffed above formula or above the CBA. And it's because the district has chosen to invest funds in these particular schools for these particular positions. And so you'll see that the split is almost even here between base and S and C. And again, but again, the same thing holds here, that those S and C dollars must be invested in S and C activities. And then we have some asterisk on some of these items because some of these were shifted over to COVID funding sources and some of our social workers were shifted over to COVID funding sources in '21, '22 a year because their activities changed. They were working in a different capacity, more related to addressing learning loss and some of the social emotional items and assisting us with mitigating the spread of COVID. And I believe that's almost getting close to the end of our presentation. Our next slide, I'd like to turn this one over to our chief human resource officer, Ms. Kancy McCarron, to talk about AB 438.
Good evening, board. Just to give you a snapshot of some changes that will affect us should we need to engage in classified layoffs. Assembly Bill 438 changed the process for which districts lay off classified employees. So what we have there for you to look at, on the left-hand side, is the former process. Previously, you might recall that when the district needed to lay off classified employees, it had the ability to lay off any time during the year. Bringing it to the board, providing a 60-day notice was part of the requirement. There was no hearing as part of that process. And in our district, what we did is we brought those very close to the time that we also brought certificated layoffs if they were necessary. But we absolutely had to do it prior to April 15th in order to ensure that the 60 days was in effect before the end of the school year, before schools went out for the summer. So with AB 438, there are a few things that have changed and some pretty dramatically and others that are the same. So some things that are the same is that it's still reasons for a layoff, including lack of work, lack of funds, employees still have bumping rights. You might recall with classified employees in positions they previously held, classification hours, calendars, if they have more seniority than another individual, then they could bump that employee. That's still the case with AB 438. As well as employees having rehire rights for 39 months. If the district has a position available that they were laid off in, we first go to that person to try to bring them back before posting and filling the position. Those pieces remain. So some of the big changes with AB 438 related to classified layoffs is the definition of a permanent employee. One of the things that is going to happen now with this is that we will need to conduct enough analysis to know that by the time we send the final notices, if an employee is probationary now, would they be permanent by that time? And if so, then we would need to include them. Another big component of this is now the classified layoff process will mirror that of the certificated layoff process. So for certificated, you may recall that we would come to you in February in times when layoffs were necessary. And we would, with board approval, work to get preliminary layoff notices out to employees to notify them by March 15th. And that preliminary notice said, the district thinks that we will need, not need your position and therefore need to issue a layoff notice. So now that same timeline is for classified. So no more 60 days. It is they have to get that initial preliminary notice by March 15th. They then also with AB 438, now will have a right to a hearing. And there are a few exceptions for that, a few things that, exclusions. But for the most part, they're going to have a right to a hearing. And with that hearing comes a time for employees to engage and share any concerns they might have about the process, about seniority, about those components. The administrative law judge will issue a response and a decision, just like in certificated, that will come at the beginning of May. The district would come back to the board to say, here is what we have for you to consider for final layoff notices. And those final layoff notices would need to be given to employees before May 15th. So the same process as is for certificated now is for classified with those components. So what that means for us in our district is really, really a lot of work with regards... our district is really, um, really a lot of work with regards to ensuring that we're identifying the appropriate employees. It means the budget development meetings that previously took place in January and part of February are going to have to take place in January. So if the decisions are made, that this is something that we're going to have to consider, it's January decisions for an early February board consideration. So things are just moved up a little bit. We wanted to share this overview just to give you an idea of what to expect with these changes should classified layoffs be necessary. And I'll turn it back to Rose.
Thank you, Consey. Uh, next slide, please. And here we are at the summary, um, of our presentation. Uh, so as we shared earlier, uh, we will need a board-approved fiscal recovery plan required, uh, as required by our conditional approval of our adopted budget by twelve sixteen twenty-one and SCOE's fiscal responsibilities continue until our structural deficit is eliminated. So at this point, I will turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, I believe we have one public comment?
Uh, yes, and one additional. So our first public comment is from Mo Cash Mary.
Hi, this is Mo Cash Mary. Just wanted to say again that, you know, this district just keeps crying wolf over and over and over again. What seems to happen is we just conservatively underestimate what we're gonna need, what we, what we require and then all of a sudden we end up with a surplus. Kind of, I'm excited that the law tightens some of those things so that you can't just use the extra money left over and throw it into the surplus. We should be spending current dollars on current students. Um, and this board needs to show the leadership to fight for the revenues necessary. Instead of trying to build an austerity district, which has failed time and time and time and time and time again and only led to continued decreases in enrollment, we need to fight for the schools our kids deserve and advocate together for our state and federal politicians to adequately fund education to what we need. What we, what, the way we value our staff is not working. We can't fill positions. The wheels are falling off the bus. It's time for the district to take a different tack instead of the failed neoliberal austerity model. We, our kids need better schools. They need more support. We need to be able to recruit and retain the best staff and that's not happening right now. And that's on this board. And so we need this board to stand up to against layoffs and budget cuts and instead fight for the revenue that we need if they think we need revenue. And if there's really cuts, then they should be not cutting the superintendent's salary, right? And they should be cutting the meals. They shouldn't be spending six million dollars on filters, right? We could go on and on and on for a long time. We want this district to be more transparent. And I also want to just bring up that I know the board members have told us in the past they wanted to see regular updates on how the COVID money is being spent. And I'm not seeing that. I haven't seen that for months. So again, we're hoping the board will step up and do that, uh, and show leadership instead of cowardice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
There was one other person requesting to speak, but they are not online.
Taylor?
Taylor Kayata?
Hi, thank you. So I don't have a comprehensive statement, you know, like Mo did or SCTA did earlier, but I have two considerations I would like you to please take in mind as you consider this proposal we discussed tonight. The first is that it seems that one of the key findings from the state auditor's report that, you know, we were all very excited to receive a couple of years ago was not addressed here, which is special education costs. Um, in that report, they found something over twenty, twenty-six million dollars, um, just in one fiscal year, a couple of years ago, that was an increase in special education costs from the previous year. If we start looking at issues like this or potentially other areas that are out of control spending, this is something that also needs to be considered. Um, my experience with the special education department confirms and my work in the, uh, special education community is there's over-assessment and over assigning of services to certain communities, particularly students of color. And then there's under-assigning of services to other students, which ends up in these lawsuits that every meeting you're starting it off by telling us how, well, not how much you're paying, but the fact that you're settling constantly. Another issue is with respect to teacher salaries and benefits, this conversation has really, in my opinion, taken a strange turn by being presented merely as we need to cut total package compensation immediately to get the center control when really what these audits we've looked at over the years have said is, is long-term benefits, is long-term issues that we have to deal with. So if we're talking about cutting health benefits, cutting pension contributions, things of that nature, that shouldn't come without a correlating increase in salary. So in the particular year you take action, at least the teacher shouldn't be taking a pay cut. Um, so that's it. And, you know, I understand this is a difficult conversation, but, um, I just want to say that it seems like this presentation from tonight and some we've seen recently seems to not be showing the full picture. Thanks.
Thank you, Taylor. All right. Do we have any board comments, questions regarding this? Member Garcia?
Um, yes, thank you. I have a few, so I'm gonna kind of bounce around a bit. Um, so Rose, um, thank you for always, um, explaining this in a way that, um, I think is, um, understandable. Um, but, uh, sometimes, you know, um, it still requires a little bit of time to process. So in the presentation you have, maybe I'm gonna look at, um, slide fifteen, you have a list of school site programs that, um, could be identified for, um, potential cost savings, right? Um, elementary sports that is being funded with LCFF SNC dollars.
Sorry, Member Garcia, can I ask Vincent to put, uh, slide, uh, which is slide fifteen? Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, I think, um, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is that, um, I know, and then you have it in the star, that we shifted some of these, um, expenditures to COVID funding, but we have multiple years of COVID funding. So I'm just wondering, um, has there been an analysis on, um, and I think just last, the last board meeting, we, we adopted the ESTR three round of, um, a plan and that includes, I know it included VAPA, I know it included, um, you know, other types of, um, programs. Just wondering if we've already done an analysis on how much of these programs we can shift over for multiple years using COVID funding? Because this, these are programs we can support with that. So, um, and these are just one, some that stood out, but there are others, um, college and career visits, for example. So just wondering if you can, um, respond to that? And I, and I do have a couple of other questions.
Sure, sure. Yes, good questions. Um, yes. Um, and when, as you know, when we first started to receive these funds, um, it was pretty clear that, you know, these were eligible under the guidelines of, at the time we were getting, um, ESTR and we were getting, uh, CARES and, and, you know, some other, uh, ESTR one too. Um, and as we're moving along and we're starting to be, come back to an environment where we have in-person instruction, um, some of the, 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 the programs, um, we have to reevaluate them and make sure that they still meet the criteria. Um, those are starting to tighten up, especially under ESTR three. And so we will just need to make sure when we look at these that we're, that they are making that connection to addressing, um, learning loss or mitigating the impact of, of COVID. Um, and, uh, and if they don't, then they have to, you know, stay under the category that they're originally funded under. So, um, because again, these funds are subject to an audit, just like all the other funds. And so they may no longer, um, meet that criteria depending on how it is that we're using these, um, these funds and how these programs are being operated. And so we will, of course, look at all of these items that are currently being funded under some of these COVID category, COVID funding categories and consider them, um, for next year, uh, funding. Because this is this year, this year they're fine, but next year, um, we just need to make sure that the criteria is still met. But yeah.
Okay, um, that's good to know. I, I figured that was happening, but I just need to ask. And then, um, so another one that I'm, I'm gonna bounce around. Um, in the, um, I guess in the summary that we get in our packet, um, we know that SCOE, the Sacramento County Office of Education, conditionally approved our budget, twenty-one, twenty-two, um, with a lack of going concern determination primarily due, doing, due to the ongoing structural deficit. And in order to address structural deficit, we must implement a plan that sufficiently, um, re, uh, resolves the ongoing structural, um, budget deficit. So we know that, that we, we're supposed to adopt a plan by December. What I, I don't understand is, I mean, what does that plan look like? I mean, if we're supposed to provide a plan, do we have a number, um, that we're targeting for twenty, I think it's for twenty-one, twenty-two, or is it for twenty-two, twenty-three?
At this point, it would be for twenty-two, twenty-three. Obviously, if there's items that, you know, this year that, I don't know, if there's a contract that we just don't need the services for, we would obviously, you know, reduce that intake and take that savings into consideration. But as far as the plan that the board is expected to, to, to adopt by December, it would be effective, um, twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's what we provided you with a couple of scenarios just to show you that because we have the SERP, this, this ending fund balance right now, um, that, that can support the deficit for a couple of years. We're not in that same situation we were about two, three years ago, where we were projecting to run out of cash and we were projecting to, to be in a, in a negative, um, position like year two and, and possibly need a state loan. We, um, do unfortunately, due to COVID and the closures, we did shore up quite a bit of reserves. So we have enough to get by. We have enough to get by, but at some point, unless something else changes, um, you know, we get more, uh, hold harmless at the state level and, you know, we, we can hang on to our current ADA revenue, um, we will run out, you know, we will deplete those reserves eventually. So that's why this is a good time to start to, you know, chip away at that. And so that's what we provided you with the two scenarios to show you that you don't have to do the full thirty-nine in twenty-two, twenty-three, but can ease into it. And there were a couple of items in there that we shared with you that will be part of the budget development process that can be applied towards that deficit. And, and that was on the, one of the very first slides. Um, it was slide fourteen, if you can take us back there, Vincent, please. Thank you. Um, and it would be, uh, the six point nine, which is adjusting our staffing to our enrollment decline. That's something we do every year. That's part of our normal, um, budget development process. And, uh, the other one is the teacher induction. That's an ongoing one that would be shifted to another, um, uh, funding source that we just recently got. And then possibly that textbook adoption. We have to really study that one a little bit more and work with our academic department. If that one also can be shifted to an online or some kind of, um, addressing learning loss mode, we can, uh, shift that over to ESTR three. So in just those three categories alone, that, that can, uh, provide an opportunity to save about twelve million dollars in ongoing expenses and, um, while not, you know, really impacting, um, any of the programs there. So just as an example to show how we would ease into the plan.
Okay. Well, that's helpful because, um, you know, as I'm thinking of the December deadline, it just seems like it's, um, really early compared to some of the other decisions that we have to make. So I was trying to understand sort of what plan can we possibly adopt in December, um, that, um, allows for some of the other, um, routine processes to take place, especially as we're talking about maybe right sizing, um, if we, we don't see back, um, the sixteen hundred students that we, we lost this year, um, potentially more. We just, we just never know if, if that's going to, um, grow in, in the wrong direction. So I'm just trying to figure out if December's too early, um, if, if there is a way to maybe push it out if, if needed, um, so that we can consider some of the other factors as well. So, um, that was, that was kind of, um, what I just needed to understand. And then I do have two more questions. So, um, apologize to my colleagues, but, um, my other question is with the ending fund balances, um, what, I think you alluded to this, um, and my last question is for Consey. So, um, and then, um, I think you alluded to this, that the ending fund balance is a result of one-time savings, unspent dollars because, you know, you budget for hiring, I don't know, ten teachers and, or, or ten positions and for whatever reason, you just couldn't hire five. So you, you, you take those, um, those, uh, the savings of those five positions and you kind of roll them over to, to this, the end fund balance because you didn't spend those. You budgeted for them, but you didn't spend them. So I'm just wondering, um, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to process how much of that total number is, um, is one-time savings and how much of it is budgeted on an ongoing basis? And, and we're, what's a blip and what's a trend essentially? So, um, I don't know if you can tease that out for me, but at some point I, I need to understand that a little bit more because if every year we're ending up with some sort of, of savings and it's through repetitive actions, just trying to understand how do we stop and think about how do we come closer aligned to the reality of, of what's happening at the end of the year or when the actuals get all sorted out? Um, but if you, if you can just give me a quick response, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, yes, absolutely. That's a really good question. And this happens in, in not just our district, in many districts where you budget, assuming like you took the scenario, Member Garcia, ten positions and, uh, you budget for them because you assume that you're gonna fill them at the beginning of the year. And what you're, we should, you know, as what districts do, uh, customarily is that as we progress along the year, like even in the first quarter, we realize that, oh, we didn't fill two of those positions. So we start to reduce those budgets. And that's why we, when we bring to you our first interim, which we will bring to you, that's when we true up some of those accounts. We will true up any vacancies that have occurred, um, have been in place for the first few months of school and we will release those funds. So then they become part of your ending fund balance. And we'll disclose that and say, you know, we often in our notes, you'll see that on the unrestricted and the restricted side, we'll say, you know, teacher vacancies or classified vacancies. Um, and then we'll have the associated benefits and the amount that those amounts came to. Now, we do, we do trend analysis to figure out where we're gonna land with that. Um, but really at the beginning of the year, we budget full, a full percent. And then at the, you know, as we move throughout the year, we start to liquidate that. And we, you know, and it's kind of, we have to be cautious because obviously there are some backfilling for some of those vacancies, whether it's substitutes or whether it's contracts. So we have to make sure that we're not cutting too much because then we have to, you know, make sure that we leave enough for those other, um, activities that are gonna take the place of those jobs that should have been done by those vacant positions. And so, yeah, that's, that's the way we move throughout the year. And the same thing is true with all of the other categories. Maybe a contract didn't get filled at the beginning of the year. Um, so we start to reduce down those, those line items accordingly as well. And we disclose that. And all of our notes that you'll see with our interim reporting will, will tease out what those amounts are and what categories they were for.
Okay, so, um, I think I just need to continue to look at that so I can keep understanding that because it just, um, you know, um, there is a sense that, uh, from our community that there, you end up with all this money, millions of dollars at the end of the year on top of your, you know, two percent set aside, which two percent is what payroll for like a week and a half or something like that? I mean, it's, it's the minimum, right? Um, in, in standard practice or, or the recommended practice, your percentage is seventeen percent, right? So I mean, we're, we're like way below. But I'm just trying to gauge what is the right amount to end up with? What's reasonable? I don't, we don't want to end up at, uh, just with the two percent. Um, but I'm just trying to figure out at what point, um, how much can we spend down, um, and not end up with, with a high end fund balance? But I don't know what that number is. So I just wanted to share that. And, um, my last question, it is for Consey, but I think the superintendent wants to chime in.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Member Pritchett. I do want to interject. Thank you, Member Garcia. Um, I, I do want to give an update to our board and to our community. Uh, you may remember that, uh, during budget adoption, uh, for this fiscal year, we talked about the importance of continuing to study and assess, um, how we might make, um, some of our programs, um, our specialized specialty small programs, uh, more sustainable because of the continued investment that they have required, uh, from our unrestricted general funds. And I just want to let the board know that, um, despite all of the challenges that have come with COVID, uh, we do have a plan that, um, has started to initiate whereby, uh, Mary Harding Young, uh, who served as our instructional assistant superintendent, um, and because of her, uh, many years of experience, having been part of several redesigns, um, will be, uh, has been tasked and she has grace, great, great, graciously agreed, uh, to support us in the development of several work groups, uh, to start, uh, that assessment process. Um, and we believe that we will be able to come to you, um, with some set of recommendations before the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as well. And that will involve a work group, for example, that looks at dual immersion programs. And why is it that, or how might we figure out a way in which we put ourselves in a position where we have a true K-12 dual immersion programs as opposed to dual immersion programs that have a gap, for example, in the middle school years? We will look at our small high school programs that in some cases are still struggling with enrollment and what might be some, some, some models for that. By no means an easy task, but I do want to just express my appreciation to Mary for agreeing to support us with that and want to make sure that the board knows that just because we have an influx of one-time funds and you see the multi-year projection, for example, that should not mean that we disregard that, that commitment that we made to you and to our community because eventually we're going to have to address that, that issue. And it's a very difficult issue that I'd rather be proactive on and report to you on an ongoing basis. So just a reminder to our board about that and to our community.
Thank you. That's, that's something that I think we, we agreed that we would wait for this year. It needed to be informed, it needed to be studied and it needed to really be thought through in terms of maximizing other opportunities. You know, not just dual immersion, but I'm going to say concurrent enrollment or with community colleges at the high school level. So, so it's just really important. So thank you, Mary, for agreeing to stay on and really, and really working on that analysis that I think it's really important. And then the opportunity that we have with additional funds to essentially soften the landing on, on some of these decisions and really in set up the structure, the infrastructure to support these changes on an ongoing basis. But my question to Kancy is, thank you for the update on A B four thirty-eight and for having that side by side. And now that everything's sort of, just being around, being on the board for the last three years now, feels longer. But I know that when you go through that process, the preliminary notices, that takes a really, it takes a lot of work, right? Because there's so many processes that you have to go through to land on sort of the, the number of positions or the even, even who is in those positions. So now that both of these, you know, different classified and, and certificated, and now that they're merging and you have a bigger pool that you have to process within the same timeline, I just want to know if H R has the capacity to do all of this work at the same time? Because it's really important that H R has the capacity to process all of this. So, you know, I just, if not, if, if there's no capacity, what are we doing to ensure that there is capacity? So Kancy, I don't know if you want to answer that question.
Well, first I'll just, oh, sorry, superintendent, were you going to? Okay, first I'll just say, thank you for recognizing that. And, and you're right, these two, the, the certificated process is a more in-depth process than was the classified process. And so now that they are following the same timelines in the same way, and you might recall that it kind of funnel shape, right? It started with the preliminary, doing some analysis, who gets those March fourteenth, March fifteenth notices and down to May. It is going to, the entire timeline is just pushed way, way back. So things where previously there was a little bit of flexibility with the board to take something at the end of February or maybe the beginning of March, if it was late enough, just, we don't have that, that time. We don't have that space. We don't have that luxury, that cushion. And it's going to need to be the first board meeting in February where we're looking at some of these things. So it does push everything back. And I appreciate you just even bringing up, just with everything else going on. It certainly will be difficult. We have many hard workers will continue to, to do our best to make sure all of those things align. And we're starting that planning process now. We're developing the teams now, much earlier than we have in the past because we need to. But at the same time, I mean, it is awkward. We're still trying to fill positions, right? We, we still have that work that's taking place. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
Okay, so I don't think you answered my question, but I do hope that if you identify the need for additional support, because you are, you're still trying to hire for current openings, right? I know you're doing, you were doing interviews twice a week. You probably still are. So it's just really, I think, important that, that we, we know if, if there is additional help that's needed, that we figure out how to make sure that that help is in H R. Or if there's, I don't know if it's one of those situations where you can contract out certain type of work. I have no idea. All I know is that this is going to, this new law is going to create a lot more work in a short, in, in like those few months. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I, that I asked the question because I know, I know H R is doing a lot. So, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent questions, member Garcia. Member Phillips?
Can we make sure that, I guess, when we come back with another review, that we can really look into the special education spending? Please? Pretty please.
Yes.
Do we have any other board comments? All right, seeing none. This is an informational item and will be brought back to us with the timelines that were proposed by Chief Ramos. Thank you so much for this very in-depth presentation. Hard to make these types of decisions for, for you staff and, and for us. So hoping we can find the happy medium, if there is one, right? So thank you. Item ten point O, public hearing, ten point one. Public hearing, second reading of revised board policy for one-one-nine-point-two-one, professional standards, was previously labeled code of ethics. Raoul Bosio and Ms. McCarr.
Thank you, Board President Pritchett. And good evening, Board members. Superintendent Aguilar, this is the second reading. So we'll go through and provide just a summary update of what was previously shared. And it is before you for a decision. The professional standards, as was previously called the code of ethics, this is a revision. So this is something that we've had. It has not been revised in a significant amount of time, as you can see here, last adopted in two thousand and two, and it's time for a revision. So it aligns with the professional standards that now exist. Next slide. So the, the focus around this additional piece are to enhance the integrity of the district, advance the goals of the educational program and really contribute to a positive school climate. And we're really looking to provide both the guidelines regarding the inappropriate conduct as well as the reporting of that inappropriate conduct. As important to make sure that it is effectively reported and it's very specific on what needs to happen in those cases. Next slide, please. So an example of one of the revisions includes looking at how we are providing examples related to inappropriate conduct, engaging in inappropriate socialization or fraternization with, with a student or soliciting, encouraging, or maintaining an inappropriate written, verbal and physical relationship with a student. Like just being that specific in terms of some of the inappropriate conduct. And then again, providing guidelines on how to report that misconduct. So it's very clear cut. People are, there are no questions about what you should do when there is misconduct taking place. Next slide. And actually, I think because these were together, these PowerPoints were combined. That's the end of the code of ethics revisions that we're bringing forward to you now for the professional standards. Thank you.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Okay, and my colleague Raoul Bosio will talk with you about the next.
Thank you, Ms. McCarr. Good evening, President Pritchett, Port of Education, Superintendent Aguilar. We are here back for the second reading of a new policy, policy four-one-one-nine-point-two-four, maintaining appropriate adult student interactions. It is kind of a twin, if you will, or it goes together with our previous policy. And this policy is, is an important new policy aimed at helping to protect the safety, safe environments for our students and professional standards for our staff. By way of background, of course, as you all know, the district staff are mandated child abuse reporters. And the district owes a duty of care to all of the students under its supervision. This policy is based off of a model C S B A policy and was also circulated amongst district administrators for additional feedback and additions and revisions. Next slide. So this policy is intended to establish, again, a sound policy for all adults with whom students may interact at school or in school-related activities in order to prevent unlawful or inappropriate interactions with students and to avoid boundary-blurring behaviors that undermine trust in the adult-student relationship. The policy contains a detailed list of examples of specific inappropriate conduct. Some of those are listed for you here. And they really include some, some needed language around the unauthorized use of social media, unauthorized electronic communications that go beyond any sort of reasonable educational need or professional relationship between teacher and student. And we would also describe a lot of the conduct here that, that is listed as that kind of grooming type of behavior that we're trying to prevent in a proactive fashion in order to prevent any really serious, serious matters from arising. And finally, we do try to acknowledge throughout the policy that, of course, there are certain professional adult conduct that may be necessary in an emergency situation or to serve a legitimate purpose related to instruction, counseling, student health or student staff safety. Thank you very much.
Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, do we have any board comment or question? All right, with that, I'll take a motion. And the second, student preferential vote? All right, Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
All right, eleven point O communications. Eleven point one, employee organization reports. S C T submitted their report to us. Do we have S E I U? T C S? Teamsters? U P E? All right, eleven point two, district advisory committees. Community advisory committee?
Yes, we have a report from Taylor Caata.
Are you there, Taylor?
There we go. I was waiting for the unmute button to show up.
Oh, that's okay.
And I have to say, we are now ahead of schedule, so congratulations. So here's our report. So, sorry. Again, I am Taylor Caata, the Secretary of the District Special Education Community Advisory Committee. As you know, we're a group of parents, teachers and community members who advise you on matters concerning students with disabilities as the education code tasks us to do. Tonight, we would like to voice our continued concern for our most vulnerable students. For purposes of protecting our students, we need to provide them with the option of a virtual learning opportunity. As we learned during the pandemic, virtual online learning and teaching can be done. For those who have compromised health and other personal and family challenges that make returning to the classroom infeasible, this will be an opportunity for them to continue to learn. To make this happen, all interested parties must come together and collaborate. This includes the district's administration and its unions. Forcing students with disabilities to return to the classroom or else forego their special education services is cruel and unkind. We can do better and we must do better by these students. I'll remind any parent listening tonight, the same warning that I gave last time I made an update to this board. Do not sign away your child's hard-fought I E P plan. Your I E P services are guaranteed by federal law and are not something the district can force you to forfeit in order to keep your family safe. Additionally, I will reiterate the request that I made to you last time I updated, which is that if a student opts for special, for independent study or is placed there due to vaccine requirements, they should be able to keep their current service providers. They should remain connected to the people who have been working with them before independent study and who will be with them once the pandemic ends. Fulfilling this request will ensure stability for our children while avoiding service mismatches now and as we emerge from the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Anybody from D L O C? Our, L cap, Gwene? No? Student Advisory Council?
For tonight's meeting, I would like to give a brief update on the progress of the student advisory council. Yesterday, we had our first meeting with Planned Parenthood to talk about our sex ed initiative. In that meeting, we gained important information about the possibilities of reforming the sex ed program across the high schools and middle schools in S U S D. In the future, what we could possibly be implemented in schools would be sex at week or month, which would include school assemblies, school events, workshops and collaborations with Planned Parenthood. Moving forward, we will be connecting, collecting student voice using Google Forms. We would like to know more about the experiences and expectations of our sex ed program. This is expected to be done in the coming months. There will be more updates in the future. Hopefully, we will eventually present our initiative in front of the board. Make sure to stay updated through our Instagram account at S U S C dot S A C as well as our monthly newsletter. And I would like to thank member Garcia for connecting us with Planned Parenthood. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And I, I don't know if this already exists, but maybe within the sex ed curriculum, maybe incorporating something for human trafficking and sexual assault. I'd love to have a conversation with you guys about that. All right, African-American Advisory Board? All right, we do not have Gwene online? Gwen, okay. Gwene, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, sorry. I forgot I was watching the meeting in live mode instead of.
No problem.
So thank you for your patience. Yeah, so I'm Gwene, parent member of the L cap cap. I'm appointed by the birthday girl, member Murawski. So I want to say upfront how knowledgeable and helpful our staff liaison, Stephen Ramirez Fong, is. It's really a pleasure working with him. So let me give you a report from this month. We had, we had input from Christina Espinoza and Mary Harden Young regarding college and career readiness, including credit recovery efforts. We were all asked what college and career readiness meant to us, and we got a wide range of answers, which shows there's probably no one right way to do this. But this is definitely a priority of the pack to make sure that all students have a post-secondary plan. In the L cap itself, this year, we decided to propose making college and career readiness something that starts in kindergarten, actually, almost like developing an I E P. almost like developing an IEP for each student, not just for special ed students, that would detail an annual path for how they're going to be successful by the time they graduate from high school. So we were really pleased to learn that the Office of College and Career Planning is implementing a six-year plan starting in middle school. It's very exciting, and we hope to monitor the development of this tool as it progresses. The PAC had lots of questions about what was happening with independent study. PAC members have all heard from parents who are frustrated by the lack of progress being made in getting kids into independent study. There was a lot of concern about kids who've been waitlisted for Capital City School and kids who are getting very little if no actual teacher time. So even though we realize this is a problem statewide, we have ongoing concerns about how the teacher shortage is, once again, affecting those students who can least afford to be out of school. We also discussed how teacher collaboration time is being used. The PAC drafted a data collection tool for this area, and there was consensus about setting an expectation for how the time should be used for in teacher collaboration, with an emphasis on making sure the issues of equity remain in the minds of teachers as they plan and discuss teaching practices and challenges. We want to make sure that there's consistency in how teachers use that time and keep a focus on the underserved student populations. There was also discussion about how often, when the district has very good intentions in developing or delivering a new program or service, in fact, the intentions don't necessarily translate to successful implementation for people in real life. And a lot of the times, this has to do with poor communication from the district as messaging trickles down from a school to staff and parents. We can talk more about that later, but I wanted to bring that up. Anyway, lastly, we discussed how to do outreach to schools. We're developing an outreach plan, and we've established a schedule for each PAC member to visit one school per month over the next three months to listen and learn about those schools and build relationships. We want to collect information that can help us identify themes of issues raised at various school sites. It will help us be better informed in setting forth priorities of the LCAP. And we intend to present those themes at a special board meeting next February. So that's that, thank you for listening.
Great, thank you so much. Item 11.3 Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, President Pritchett, and I will be very brief. I do want to just acknowledge and recognize the deep frustration that still exists in our community. And I know that it may not be enough to just express how much time we are spending here internally trying to problem-solve some of the challenges that we face, not just in Sac City but across the state and nation related to staffing. I have been at school sites where our principals are covering classes, where teachers during their prep period are covering classes. And I want to, of course, just recognize those efforts across the entire system. We've had our principal supervisors act as acting principals in some cases for a couple of days as well. So we are doing our very best to try to make sure that we mitigate the impact that this is all having across the entire district. So I want to just send my deepest appreciation to all of our teachers, our administrators, custodial staff. We have substitute staff across the entire district, and we've been able to manage with a lot of effort on the part of many of our staff. I also want to just speak very briefly and thank our community. We, of course, have now been in school for a little over two months, and throughout that time, we've continued to work very closely with our partners at the Sacramento County Public Health Department and using their guidance and consulting with them to make sure that we start to resume some of the activities that our students have been desperately asking for. And we're doing that, I admit, slowly but very intentionally as well. And I was able to stop by very quickly at the homecoming dance at Hiram Johnson, for example, a couple of Saturdays ago, right when that storm hit. And I was there close to about 10 o'clock when the program was going to end and the rain started to fall. And it didn't bother our students at all. They were having lots of fun out in the quad. They were dressed as if they were having their homecoming indoors. And generally, we're just having a really good time. We've seen some of our students now at outdoor activities. But I admittedly will say that we have been very intentional and patient about making sure that these opportunities are available to students, and we're going to continue to do that. So I want to just thank our community for their continued support in that very intentional effort that we've been going through. And of course, encourage our community to continue to participate and partner with us so that together we can move a little bit faster as we enter the winter and spring months as well. I don't, I'm not an athlete myself, but I know that there's a lot of excitement out in the system with some of our schools being in playoff games starting tomorrow. I know that many of you as board members are out there supporting our student athletes, our communities, and I just want to express our appreciation for your involvement in those activities. And finally, as you heard from our very talented team around vaccinations and the opportunities, I just want to continue to encourage our community to access the many opportunities that our team has been able to bring to our community here at Cerna as well as many of our school sites. I just encourage our community to go onto our website where you can find where our next vaccination clinics are taking place and sign up for those. So again, thank you to our staff and to our community for those efforts.
Thank you, Superintendent. 11.4, I'll forego my president's report tonight. 11.5, student member report. Nope, you don't have anything else? All right. 11.5, information sharing by board members. Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you, I have a few items. So my first item is, I'd like to request that we get an update on the status of independent study. I don't think we've had something since we started school. We kind of get information in little bits and pieces, but I think we need a just a more comprehensive update. And then, I don't know if it's somewhere online and I just couldn't find it on the website, but maybe some of the plans that we've adopted with expenditure plans as they relate to ESSER spending. I just didn't see that they were posted online. I did want to share those with PTA members, just as I know that they often fundraise for very specific programs for students and, you know, so some, and we're funding some of those. So I want to make sure that they know, and I wanted to point them in a direction, look, this is what we're funding. So to the extent that you're fundraising, you can focus those limited dollars on something else. But I wasn't able to find anything, so I'm hoping that maybe that is available for our community to know what we've approved or what we're planning to spend things on. I know these are living documents, so our plans will come back and maybe we'll need to make changes. And then I do want to, you know, give a shout out to one of our local principals who pretty much, single-handedly, working with community-based organizations, Principal Nathan McGill of SLI Baker. I mean, he was in constant contact with one of his families in Afghanistan for several months, and he managed to connect the family to, when they finally got out of Afghanistan, they got caught up in the whole, you know, withdrawal, et cetera, and then they got stuck there like so many other families. And the families are now, I believe, en route back to Sacramento. If not, if, and maybe they're already here. But I just wanted to make sure that if there's a way to recognize those extraordinary efforts and his commitment to his families and his unrelentless advocacy, I want to make sure that we do something. And then following up on that, I also want to ask, what is it that we're doing or what can we do, especially with ESSER funds, to make sure that we're hiring an interpreter or a position for our families who speak Farsi, Dari, Pashto? And then, but not just interpreters, we really need someone who helps them sort of integrate into our community. So I know that many of the families who left Afghanistan over the years and who are here, they're highly educated, they were often the interpreters and and for our military, so they're very well, I think, positioned to potentially be these partners that we need through our school district. So I want to make sure I officially make that request. And then, I also had, I also want to share information and ask that the district pursue these opportunities. One is the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Certification Incentive Program. This is, as you know, I do education advocacy during the day, so one of, part of my job is to listen to the State Board of Education. They just met yesterday and today. And this is, and the state budget, $250 million, is available to school districts to apply. And essentially, this is available to any teacher who has attained certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards to receive an award of $5,000 each year if the teacher agrees to teach at a high-priority school for at least five years. So that's a total of $25,000. And that's a lot of money. So this is something that, this application is going to be made available in probably a week or two. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up to your attention so that we can share these opportunities with our teachers. And the goal of this incentive grant is that, you know, we recruit and support experienced teachers to go to the schools with the students with the highest needs. And then my other request is that, and I think I've already shared this with you, Superintendent, is that we pursue the California Community Schools Partnership Program. I know that we applied the last round, and we were actually one of 20 recipients. So Board Member Rhodes has a community school at Luther Burbank. But this is, this is $2.8 billion available for this particular program. And one of the, there are multiple grants, but one of the grants that's coming up in the spring, the winter, spring, are the planning grants. So to the extent that we can plan, we can apply for a plan, a planning grant, it's my understanding from what I heard today that they're not going to be onerous. But these planning grants can then afford the district to hire someone to build capacity so that we can then apply for an implementation grant. So to draw down more grant funds, to have more community schools throughout the district. So I just wanted to make sure that I let you know about those two opportunities because that's right around the corner. And I know that the district is a prime candidate to be eligible for some of these grants, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Can I just respond to a couple? Thank you for those opportunities, as always. Member Garcia, we are waiting for the actual proposal to come out. At least as of last week, I don't think it was released yet, but our grant writer, Diane Brown, is on top of it. And so we will absolutely keep the board updated on that. And I do want to, as well, thank you so much. We were with our principals, and I commended all of our site leaders. But as I encounter things that I think should be recognized, and I did mention the work that Mr. McGill has led for our community, not just for his school community, but for other Afghan families. And I just want to be respectful that there was a lot of work that took place that we've been very conscientious about not disclosing as well. But it is a very difficult situation, one that I think as we learn more about the unreasonable, let me say, immigration policies that these situations have highlighted. I do want to just recognize that we are already working on ways to make sure that we have a coordinated effort to support our families very holistically once they're back. And once we welcome them back, we've gotten a lot of media requests, of course, but what's more critical is what happens after those few days. And Mr. McGill, Victoria Flores, and others are already thinking through how that happens. In terms of the requests for additional interpreters, you're right, this is a great opportunity to use one-time funds. We have started the onboarding process for one interpreter in those languages. And our team is going to be looking at adding through one-time funds, because that's in our, that's in our current budget, but through one-time funds, adding at least an additional interpreter in the languages that we continue to support. And so we will post those positions as well because we're aware that in each of those communities, in all of our communities, we have many immigrants that came to this country with a great deal of expertise and degrees and skill sets that are valuable to us. And so we will continue to support that as well. And then the others, I will also follow up. Thank you, Member Garcia.
Thank you. And I just got to say, great job, Mr. McGill, that's pretty awesome. I am not surprised either. I just had to put that in there, fantastic job. All right, item 12.0 Consent Agenda, can I get a motion? Okay? A second? Somebody? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Student preferential vote?
Yes, on our open session items.
Thank you, I believe we have one public comment. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, we'll take the vote as soon as we get the public comment, I apologize.
Again, thank you for the time. We'll try to see what this Williams uniform complaint, I'm gonna try to send it in for this other vacancy you had. You know, this is crazy, and then we talked about all the vacancies. So I hope the community and parents out there, you know, follow the process, I guess, we gotta do something. We keep saying all these teacher vacancies, and we need to hold our, toward the board, hold the district accountable. Again, this is the sickening that we're living this. I understand the situation, but again, to have a teacher vacancy for a CTE program, that does not make sense. And also, this affects our CSIPA, the CSIPA doesn't look real, the LCAP pack stuff doesn't look real because we're not getting anywhere. We keep going behind, so please, again, I don't know what it's gonna do, but as a parent, I can't accept failure, and I don't want my kids to fail, but you send me into, they're going into subs, they're getting herded into the cafeteria. I mean, we're not, they're not getting an education for these teacher vacancy positions. So again, CTE, that's crazy, you guys are failing, CTE don't have a program, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. All right, with that, Superintendent, go ahead, Members, sorry, Member Garcia.
I just wanted to ask a question, I don't know if it's appropriate, but, you know, the issue of subs. I know there's a shortage of subs statewide. I know that so many of our students statewide are learning or not through subs. But I'm just wondering, what is the status of the subs, not only capacity, but I also, through, you know, some of the negotiations, just wondering, what is it? Do you have an update as to what is, what's going on with the subs? Because we, we want to not only recruit, but we want to retain subs. So just, can you speak to that?
Yes, and I'll be brief unless we want to extend the 10:30 deadline here. But I will just mention, and this will be something that we'd be happy to communicate, Member Garcia and board members. We are still in the process of negotiating with SCTA a proposal around paying our substitutes. As you know, SCTA represents substitutes in Sac City Unified. We have offered to pay a 25% stipend above their sub-pay rate. We believe that we are close to signing based on the communication that we had with SCTA. We have signed the MOU that we presented, it does call for that, that increase as well as making the payment retroactive to the beginning of the, to the beginning of the academic school year. And I'm hopeful that we can get that MOU finalized and operationalized. I'm not going to say to you or claim that that is going to solve all of our problems, board members, but I do think that it is an example of some problem-solving that perhaps can alleviate some of the. but but I do think that it is an example of some problem solving that um, that that perhaps can alleviate some of the, some of the pressure uh, on our system and that uh, that I expressed earlier with a lot of our teachers during prep period covering classes. Um, today, I think we had thirty-one unfilled substitute um, uh, requests. Um, and so we we think that this could could help. Uh, other districts have done it across the state and the nation. Um, and and we think that uh, we should be able to do it here in Sac City as well.
Um, thank you. Um, so I think I, just for clarity, you've come to an agreement and did you sign that already?
I I I can't say that we've come to an agreement because uh, the the M O U does not have uh, signatures of both representatives. Um, we we have um, submitted um, to them uh, an agreement based on a communication that we had.
Okay, so both parties need to sign or one party needs to sign?
Both parties need to sign.
Both parties need to sign. So and does that come back to the board? Um, or is it one of those um, agreements that does not come to the board?
Um, I I don't know if it has to come to the board as a, as a ratification. Um, I'll turn to legal counsel. Um, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hopefully, we'll see it soon if it comes to the board.
Agreed, yes. All right, I have a motion and a second for consent agenda, um, and student preferential vote. Perfect, Superintendent roll call?
Yes, uh, Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Perfect, thank you. Item thirteen point O, future board meeting dates and locations, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item fourteen point O, adjournment. Thank you. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Member Phillips? I got you out before your birthday. Happy birthday. And happy birthday to uh, Member Morosky as well. Good night.